Look like closed hotels and closed airports and voluntarily compliance because we're all seeing the reality. And for the last two years, I've been convinced by a lot of people and not convinced that there was a crisis around me. And yes, people have died. I'm not going to get into the those aspects of it. I'm not a medical advisor, but I'm not having a clock here.
I actually have it at 2:26.
Wow!
Thirty more seconds.
Can I just sit here and look at you good-looking people?
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Rondo. Thank you for those words spoken as a citizen of Deschutes County. Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom? Is there anyone else in the room that wants to give it any testimony? Anyone on Zoom?
We're having a little bit of technical difficulties. Commissioner, there we were off the live stream. We just got reconnected, so we might need just a moment to kind of get this.
Sure. Okay.
Go on, on Zoom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for checking. I appreciate that. We do have a consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I will second it.
Any further discussion?
Like to just acknowledge adding to FTE, we talked about it in the past meeting. So one in facilities, one in community development, keeping our county, you know, staff levels up where we need it. And it's great to be able to do that.
Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, item number five on our agenda is a public hearing.
Yes, Commissioners, this is the time for you to open a public hearing and consider Board Order 2022-010, which will approve annexation of property into the Panoramic Access Special Road District. White Horse Meadows and Sisters Aggregate, both LLCs, have filed a petition to annex property into the Special Road District. The district has approved that petition. The Assessor's Office and the county clerk have certified the petition. And Community Development has reviewed it for consistency with the comp plan. Technically, you open a public hearing, take any testimony if there is any, and then close to public hearing and take action on the board order.
Okay, opening the public hearing. Do we have anyone in the audience that wants to testify on the annexation to the Panoramic Access Special Road District? Is there anyone in the room that needs to do that? I see no. Is there any public? Do we see anyone with raised hands on Zoom? No, no, no one is on Zoom, so therefore we may close it. And any discussion from our Commissioners?
Just acknowledge that we're doing this in coordination with the Road District, too. So this is county level, but it's already been acknowledged by the existing district.
I did want to ask, Dave, we have had some concerns expressed about the Panoramic Road District, Special Road District recently from patrons or members within the district. Those were unrelated to this annexation.
That's correct. Those are associated with some improvements that the district is elected to move forward with out there.
Thank you.
So any no more comments then? Are we ready?
With that, yeah, now.
Make a motion?
I'll move approval of Order Number 2022-010 approving annexation of the Panoramic Access Special Road District.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, I believe I saw Nathan Garabee on the screen. He flashed by. There he is.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Mr. Garabee. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, good morning, Sergeant Nathan Garabee, Deschutes County Sheriff's Office and Emergency Services Manager for Deschutes County. We're here before you today with regard to a resolution declaring a drought emergency and requesting a drought declaration from Governor Brown. And I think I think it's fairly well-established that we're in kind of a continuing drought condition. So I don't know that I need to bore you with the details, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any before you consider the resolution.
Nathan, does somebody have easy access to how? What is the level at WikiUp? I know a couple of months ago, it was at 41%. Has it up from that point, do you know? I mean, I noticed it was actually one of the better ones. I don't know why I'd asked for it at the time, but it just it wasn't as bad as I could have imagined. I know it's not great.
It's still under 100,000 acre feet at this point.
Oh, well, it's 97,000, but what is that percentage of being filled? That's what I want to know.
It's a 200,000.
Um, I.
So is it 50%?
Yeah, it's less than half.
It's less than half. It's still like less than half, 50%. Okay.
I'm having internet issues on my other computer, which I could look up that information for you. There is a website, Oregon Water Resources, and I think Bureau of Reclamation Maintain online where you can check the the status of reservoirs and stream flows. And that's a great site to bookmark to go to frequently. And I would check it for you, but it's not working for me this morning. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. And the good news is, I think we just got some new snow at Mount Bachelor. What, they're at 71 inches or something? So hopefully, we can still get some more snow this month. We truly need it. I know we've I've only had like 15 inches at my house, averaged 33. So but it does I need it to fall where it really needs to fall. So are there some more questions for Nathan?
I don't have any questions, but yeah, Pacific Northwest climatologists are estimating that it would take 150 to 200% of normal precipitation for the next two months to get us out of drought, which is statistically, it's a very, very, very small chance that that's going to happen. We are in our now third year of drought. And the situation is very dire, not just for those who depend on water, but also for our coming wildfire season. This drought declaration is really focused on providing relief for agriculture during these these conditions. And I'm very supportive of us sending this request forward to the governor to declare a state drought to declare a state drought in Deschutes County.
Okay, Commissioner DeBon?
So with that, I'll make a motion. I'll move approval and board signature of Resolution Number 2022-021, declaring a countywide state of emergency and requesting state declaration of drought emergency within all of Deschutes County.
Second.
Are there any further comments?
Just acknowledge this is in response to a letter from the Board of Control, which is all the irrigation districts working together. And it is a resolution asking the governor's office to declare this emergency officially.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Yes, and the chair votes yes.
Chair Derr, I have one one comment.
Yes.
For the record, Eric Croft, Deputy County Administrator. In the recent legislative session, the legislature passed Senate Bill 5561 that provides Deschutes County $585,000 to help with drought relief. The purpose of the funds are they will be to use to provide domestic and community well assistance. We'll have a group of staff that will meet shortly and talk about different options for the board to consider. And that'll include Sergeant Garabee. We'll come back to the board and seek direction on how the board wants to spend these funds. But the key to the funds, they're pretty flexible. Again, they're to be used to provide domestic and community well assistance.
Okay, so Eric, that was from the E-Board. And what's the deadline that those funds have to get out? Because I had originally given Representative Reeves Iverson wells that had gone were problems last year, and people spent a lot of money re-drilling, whatever. And I'm just wondering, is there a deadline on getting these funds out?
The deadline to get the funds out or DAS is trying to get it out this fiscal year, and then the county will have the, I think it's the full two years to spend the money.
Two years?
Yeah.
Okay, but it is 585?
585,000.
Thousand dollars. So just if you're listening in the community and you're having problems with your well, we will be working on that as soon as possible, I would hope?
Yes.
Because I know there are people. Well, can it go retro to people that actually had well problems last year?
Probably not, but I don't know for sure.
Really? Because that's how they came up with the numbers was last year's problems?
Yeah, I don't know for sure.
Okay.
And I'll acknowledge, we have had people ask, you know, it's an emergency. When you don't have water and you do have some resources to be able to re-drill, you know, it's done. And then, yeah, so we've got people that are out there asking for possible reimbursement. So I support that concept if we can get there.
Eric, can you can on the timeline, can you repeat what you just said? So they're trying to transfer the funds to us within the fiscal year, and then they'll we will have two years after that?
Yes.
That's that's pretty good.
Yeah, there's an agreement that DAS has. Once we know how we want to spend the funds, we'll propose that. They have to approve it. But the the funds are actually from the State General Fund, so there's not a lot of restrictions. They're pretty pretty open in terms of how how we can spend the funds. And if the board if Commissioners have any other thoughts, I mean, that would be helpful as we put together options for the board.
Okay, so we're still we but we are waiting on a transfer from the state to us.
There's an there's an agreement. In the agreement, the county needs to specify how we'll spend the funds, and then the transfer will occur. So staff will bring the board options on how how to spend the funds. Once the board gives staff direction on that, then we'll work on the agreement with DAS.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
And then we're picturing essentially making individual grants to to property owners who have had to deepen their wells.
That's an option, yes. Yeah. And another consideration is is other reimbursement programs like that. We work with Neighbor Impact or COIC to administer the program. So that might be that's an option for consideration as well.
Yeah, we were we were exploring whether we could apply for some community development block grants to work with Neighbor Impact. It's just in that way when when the E-Board delivered this.
Yes.
You know, opportunity for us.
Yeah, we were looking at CDBG COVID funds, but it didn't fall into those parameters. But but here's another option.
Okay. Great. Well, we'll need to get back with you on that group because we truly need to get our our agreement done so we can get that funding, because I know the community is in need.
Yep.
The well drillers are very busy.
Yes, there's more to come.
All right. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
And. Okay, so now I believe we are in Envision Bend. Thank you, Whitney.
And please, we will take Nick. I'll take them in. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator. This morning, we have Laura Fritz, Executive Director from Envision Bend, joining us. Laura's going to provide an overview of the Envision Bend project scope and share information about the project with the board. We do have slides for this presentation, which we should be able to pull up shortly. And then I'm going to hand out I'll pass out some handouts that Laura brought along, but I'll turn it over to you, Laura.
I know, isn't technology wonderful?
There it is. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for having me today. I'm really excited to be able to make a presentation to you about the Bend Vision Project. I'd like to introduce a couple of people who are here with me this morning. Stephen Ames, right here, is a principal with Next Consulting Group, and that is the firm that Envision Bend has hired to help execute the Bend Vision Project over the next year. I'm also here with Ted Schoenborn, who is a member of our Board of Directors. And Ted is here for a little color commentary if it's appropriate when questions and answers occur at the end of the presentation. So I'd like to take, well, I realized last night that my presentation was a little longer than it should be. And so I've produced a couple handouts for you with a timeline of the history of Bend 2030, Envision Bend. Some of you may have known our organization as Bend 2030, but we rebranded about a year and a half ago. And so I've produced a timeline. So if you want to dig into our history more deeply, you have that information. And in that handout, I also have information about who sits on our Board of Directors, because I think it's really important to highlight who's serving on our nonprofit board and really helping govern and execute the mission of the organization. But I'm not going to take my time today to go over that. I want to tell you about what we've been working on in recent years and really dig into the Bend Vision Project and the project activities and outcomes we expect from this important community initiative and how it will benefit Deschutes County. And then we, of course, are here today because we are hoping that Deschutes County will partner with us on this on this initiative. We are asking for financial support as well as collaboration and partnership in our work. So Envision Bend really has been a community convener for its entire existence, and we have served as a champion of our community vision. Our mission is to bring diverse stakeholders together, to educate, engage, and empower all members of the Bend community to have a voice in our city's future. We are indeed a nonpartisan, independent, nonprofit organization. What our mission means on a day-to-day basis is really that Envision Bend serves as a steward and a champion of our community's vision, and we work to ensure that the vision remains vibrant, relevant, and strategic. And we do that in a number of different ways. First of all, we convene the Bend area community periodically to revise and update and refresh the vision. And that is indeed what we're focused on over the next year plus. We also assemble diverse community stakeholders to advance the initiatives and the ideas that are grounded in the vision. And we welcome and engage the community in a nonpartisan, inclusive manner to promote a healthy and livable community for all. The work that we're undertaking in the Bend Vision Project will align with and support ongoing city and county planning initiatives. And so I'll talk about that as we get into this presentation. Just a quick, very quick overview of that history. You all are probably familiar with the fact that back in 2005, 2006, the city of Bend actually undertook a visioning effort and created the first vision for the city of Bend. It was indeed led by the city. It was funded by the city. And that's when the first vision for Bend was created. We we are we were formed as a nonprofit organization after that effort. Community members who were involved in that first vision effort really didn't want to see that that product end up sitting on a shelf and not coming to fruition. And so community members got together, formed a nonprofit, and really, we became the steward of that vision, taking on the issues and trying to work with partners to implement what was what was described and defined in our community's vision. And that's really what we've done for the last 15 years or so, is work on work with partners to implement what's in the vision and then take on critical challenges that our community have faced over time. So that's kind of the backstory of who we are and gives you a little context of why we're the organization that's taking the lead on this next vision update. We think that it's really important that this process be undertaken by an independent nonprofit organization and not by a government entity. But we do also understand it's very important to partner with a wide variety of entities in our community. And the city and county are very important in in that part of the story. So what have we been working on recently? Well, really, around 2018 and early 2019, our organization came to believe that the vision was outdated. Our community had changed tremendously since the last time the vision had been created, and we needed to come together, update the vision to reflect our current needs and conditions as a community. Like I said, we felt that this effort should be community-led and community-owned. And that's why we started to work with the community to garner support for undertaking such an effort. And we were on the brink of launching this initiative back in 2020, when the global pandemic hit. And so, of course, we needed to put a big pause on that effort because it didn't make any sense to go out into the community at that time, asking about long-range dreams when everybody's really facing emergent urgent issues of just survival and health and so on. And so we paused, we did a lot of internal work, we rebranded at that time, board capacity development, continuing to build support for the project for when the time was right to take it back out into the community. And so we we started that again, that effort in 2021. So I'm just going to take a quick second to talk about why the vision and why now. You all know that our community has changed tremendously in the last 16 years. We've the city of Bend itself has doubled in size during that time. And of course, Deschutes County has grown tremendously as well. We really have been a growth magnet, and the city has gone from a big town to a small city. And of course, we always have had challenges and issues. But I think even with the global pandemic and with all the growth that we've experienced, some of those challenges have been pronounced or brought to the fore. And we have emerging issues as well that we're facing. These are no surprise to you. Housing affordability is a tremendous issue that we're facing in our community. Health, of course, resiliency in so many different ways, social equity and so on. And so that is why we feel like it's really important we take on this initiative now. We believe that the Bend area community is very hungry for genuine dialogue around the future of our community. So the timing is really right for this. Quickly, I know that you all know what a vision is. I want to share just a quick overview of that for people who are listening as well. But you know that a vision is a plan that really describes our desired destiny as a community, and it serves as our north star for where we want to be in 10, 20, 30 years down the road. It's our preferred future, our aspirations as a community, and we don't want to leave that to chance. That's why it's really important that we undertake this effort. Forward-thinking communities undertake visioning so that our future doesn't just happen, we actually help shape it. Through the process of building a community vision, there's a lot of collaboration and consensus building, and you're able to identify core community values that help shape shape the conversation and the framework of that plan. The other thing, of course, I want to emphasize is that we know that visioning really works. And I have an example here in the slides of the Sisters Country Vision Project, which was recently completed. I know that you all were a partner in this effort, partnering with COIC and the city of Sisters in delivering this process. And many of the strategies are being implemented from this plan under the guidance of the city's vision implementation team. And also, the Sisters Country Vision provided a backdrop on community aspirations that was used to inform the development of Sisters' new 2040 comprehensive plan. This this visioning process is serving in part as a model for the Bend Vision Project as well. So let's oh, this is our new brand for the project itself. We wanted to make sure that we had a brand that was very distinctive so that it would not conflict with other planning efforts. It's hot off the presses, so I just wanted to unveil that to you. So now, quickly getting into the meat of the actual the project itself and how it's going to unfold. The timeline is indeed December 2021 through March 2023. We have begun and we have embarked on the project, and I'll go into some detail about the various stages of it in a minute. Our reach is to focus on the greater Bend area. And by greater Bend, we mean the city of Bend plus outlying areas whose residents relate to or participate in the life of the city on a regular basis. We very intentionally chose this open definition to make for a more inclusive and purposeful conversation as well as to ensure that we could engage with regional entities whose purview was beyond the city proper. The emphasis is in the project will indeed be on inclusion, dialogue, visionary thinking, and consensus building. There are five phases to the project we'll go through in just a second. And there is engagement with the community in every stage of this process. And then the final result will be a whole-of-community, nonpartisan conversation. We really like to describe it as an investment in the well-being of the entire community. We anticipate that the total cost of the project will be almost $300,000. So this is our project process map right here, and I'm going to quickly take you through what we're doing in these various stages. I was indeed going to help read this, so.
You will help read, won't you?
So, you know, if I stumble a little bit, that's why. So in Phase One, we are framing the process. We have developed a framework for the vision project, and we're conducting research right now. We're really laying the foundation for the community engagement that will that is ensuing. Some of that research includes holding stakeholder interviews, interviews with community leaders. And we're also gathering information on existing plans so that we know what's going on in the community, that we can align and not compete. And we're also doing an environmental scan so that we understand the strategic issues that likely will impact the community. In Phase Two, we're going to facilitate a number of community listening sessions in the city and in the county. These listening sessions, combined with the interviews and the information we've been collecting in the first phases, will help us identify our core community values. And then also during this phase, we're doing a lot of work like this, which is getting out into the community, talking about the project, making sure that everybody in all corners of the community know what this project is about, why it's important, and and that they should participate and engage. A lot of work with partner organizations to reach very diverse communities and constituencies. Third, oops, I think I just went past it, sorry. Third phase is really the very highly visible phase of the project. And that is when we are having a lot of community engagement events out in the public. We will have workshops. We will have focus groups. We will have an online survey that can that will be translated into Spanish as well. Lots of conversations where we gather the community input, which then makes the basis for the vision statement and the strategies that will be in the five the first five-year plan for the project. It doesn't want to move. Try again. Oh, I don't know if we're having technical difficulties. Phase four.
Never fear, Whitney's here.
I don't think it's me. I'm doing the same thing.
Well.
There we go. Thank you. Phase four. At this point, we're going to gather a diverse citizens' action team, a group of of community members who will work with our consultants to actually figure out what will go into the first five-year action plan, to define what we're going to try to undertake in the first five years of the action plan. We can't just have a plan that doesn't say what we're going to try to implement. That plan will indeed identify willing partners who want to participate in those activities. We're not just going to throw ideas into a plan and say, here, whoever can do it, come and get it. We will identify those partners who will help implement, and that plan will also have measures so that we can make sure that we're keeping track of whether or not we're advancing the vision and it's becoming our reality. And then that last phase is really all about launching the plan, working with our partners to implement aspects of the first five-year plan, making sure that it stays in front of the public so that people are aware of it and we're held accountable, and and keeping track of our progress over that time. The final actual physical pieces that will come out of this is a statement of core community values, the long-term vision statement, which will be organized in a way that has focus areas, the priority areas that the community has indicated we need to focus on and and focus our efforts on. And then that first five-year action plan, which has specific actions under focus areas, describing what we want to achieve as a community. Signature projects, which are multi-stakeholder projects that will require a number of entities to come together to complete. And there will be three or four of those, because that's what's realistic in a vision, a vision statement, which is has has the shelf life of 20, 20-plus years, is about three or four signature projects. Again, identified plan partners, success measures. And then we're also going to take this plan, and we're going to try to bring it down to the individual human level and create a plan for. to bring it down to the individual human level and create a plan for individuals to take action in their own lives to help make that vision become our community's reality. We will also have, have analysis of key trends and strategic, strategic issues that are going to affect the community. The robust intentional conversations that we have with underrepresented communities will also be very informative and useful. We will be able to break down our survey information demographically so that we can tell you where the information came from, if it's from residents of the city of Bend proper or Deschutes County residents, and we will go to the people where they are. We're working with partners to reach constituencies. We're not just expecting people to come to us in a big community meeting on a weekday night, so that we really do hear from the whole community. So hopefully, from these comments, you see the value of this project, how it can be incredibly helpful to our community. But I do want to focus a little bit on Deschutes County itself, and just emphasize that visioning is a really important and complementary activity to other planning work that governmental bodies and institutions are undertaking. It really can help inform policymaking, because the citizenry has spoken about its dreams and aspirations, and it can help with your planning efforts and policymaking efforts. The Bend Vision Project is indeed a broad conversation focused at a really high level to define community aspirations. It does not take the place of a comprehensive plan. It's not designed to do that. It is a different, it is a different piece of work. And it does result in an action plan that will coordinate, or excuse me, that will feature collaborative initiatives that have been adopted by our partners. And I know that Deschutes County partners with a lot of entities to accomplish the important work that you do. The action plan will help unite entities to partner on community initiatives. Last but not least, the community conversations will be coordinated to align with and inform and support city and county planning. It's not at all designed, intended, or it will not compete with those planning initiatives that you've already undertaken or will undertake. Stephen, do you want to add any comments to this section?
Well, yeah, thanks, thanks Laura, and good to see you again, commissioners. You might remember, I came before you when the city of Sisters presented the Sisters Country Vision, which as Laura said, has been kind of a model for us, was sort of a test case, and we're incorporating a lot of the aspects of that. So we've already worked quite closely with the county, with COIC, and other regional entities in that project. And I think we see a similar process here, although obviously, this vision is, you know, Bend-centric. It's focused on the city, but we also recognize that Greater Bend, as we call it, you know, really does encompass people who live outside of the incorporated areas and smaller and surrounding communities. So we realize there's an obligation to, to both hear those voices but to be sensitive in terms of how that's coordinated with the projects that the county is taking on. We know you've got a big 2040 comprehensive plan coming up, and we're on a fairly parallel timeline with that. So it's very, we've already met with county staff to discuss how we could coordinate and also not conflict or, you know, step on toes as we're doing that project. I'm quite confident that we will do that. There's a couple other things I would say. One is, is that part of the research we're doing, Laura referred to an online community survey, and we found that these surveys, I can't remember how many people participated in the Sisters one, but it was an amazing number of people. It was something like a third of the population of the city participated, which is over the top. And, you know, we hope to do something very similar here, and we fully expect that, because Bend really is a very engaged community, and so we expect a lot of people. But we also expect people from outside the city to participate in that online survey, as well as some of our community meetings. And particularly with the survey, the way it's going to be set up, that we'll be gathering demographic and place-based information on people who participate. So we will be able to come back to you and say, of all the people we talked to, not only here's what the full group thinks, but here are the people who live outside of the city of Bend and unincorporated areas in Deschutes County, and what their perceptions are. And we think that information is going to be really valuable, both to the 2040 comprehensive plan update, but possibly to the other planning efforts. I know you're engaging in a community plan for Tumalo as well, too, and we think that will be of value to you as well. I think that's just one example. Laura's really correct in that, you know, a vision is really targeted at a higher level. It's very high-level aspirations. And as she said, the plan itself is a very collaborative plan. It's not a city or county or government plan. It's a community-based plan. And so, you know, the projects that are taken on by our partners, which many of whom will come from more regional positions such as COIC, or the Community College and others, will be participants in those plans by agreement. It's, it's not dictating to those organizations what they do, but finding out where are the collaborative areas where we can work together to help achieve those bigger, longer-term aspirations.
Great. So I'll wrap this up and take questions in a moment, but I, we are indeed here to request financial support from, and partnership from Deschutes County, and we hope that you will commit $50,000 to this important community initiative, which is one, about one-third the level of support that we are requesting from the city of Bend for the Bend Vision Project. We are indeed raising the remainder of the funds through the community, through normal fundraising channels of looking for support from local businesses, foundations, et cetera. So I invite you to help plan the brightest future for our community together. The result of all of this work will create a collaborative, forward-thinking, forward-looking, and exciting shared vision for our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, so much. Thank you for all this information. Yes, I actually even have a Sisters meeting tomorrow about the, their vision and implementation of their vision, which I believe probably Peter may be a part of that now. I know Nick was for a while. So yes, we're, we're truly still engaged there. I know that as far as asking for funding today, that's something that we are going to put into our, we have our budget coming up shortly in May. So I believe that's where we will be putting the, our analysis. So if you can get us maybe a, well, a request on top of this pocket would be great.
Okay.
That would, that would fit with what we would be doing.
Will do.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Nick, is that the, would that be the process for us to consider this through like a special project, a special project request during the budgeting process, or is there...
Yes, just coordinating with both Greg Munn, who's watching online, and Whitney, it would be through the budget process, which we're beginning here shortly. I don't know what, precisely what the, what the request, within the budget process, what the, what the fund is, or et cetera. If that's helpful, we can share that information, or we can just conceptually state that it's going, it will adjust through the budget process.
...is collecting requests that are coming out of budget cycles for your consideration as we head into the budget process, and I think their finance team will be walking you through a discussion on what options may be as you look at the package of requests that come in.
So if, if those of you that couldn't hear without the mic, the finance team is collecting requests right now, and then all of those will be presented to the Budget Committee during the budget process.
Great.
So a couple thoughts. You know, Sisters Country Plan was just a moment in time. It was the right thing to do. Everybody was ready for it. How does this fit in with the city of Bend? As in, I think of all the different aspects that could be, you know, kind of studied, or what things could pop out, and I've got a list here as I was thinking it through. So, you know, the environment, or healthcare, public safety, arts and culture, land use, the economy, energy, and then branding. This is just a, you know, just a little list of things I was thinking of, the aspects of what could be put in a plan here. As I say, the Sisters Country Vision was this, you know, beautiful little town with the, the people around it that were the movers and shakers that had opinions, and everybody started to work together. Bend is just a little different scenario. You know, it's, just like you mentioned, it's going from 50,000 to 100,000 in the, in the recent past. You can feel it, you can see it. So I guess to you, Stephen, Mr. Ames, do you have, what is this different than, you know, what does it mean to be 100,000 plus the surrounding area, different than Sisters Country?
Well, a couple things. I mean, first off, the problems are bigger and more complex, obviously, than Sisters. But, you know, in terms of the process that we use to try to engage the public in talking about what are their concerns and issues for the future, and also what are the possible solutions going forward, the process itself is quite able to be scaled up. There's, and, you know, in the case of Sisters, I think Sisters probably did more than most smaller communities did. We had a vision-action team. As Commissioner Derr said, you know, we've got a vision implementation team. I'm not involved with that project anymore, but, so it was a very comprehensive effort. And I think this effort would be equally comprehensive, but scaled up on a certain degree. So, because we realize that it's a bigger population, it's a more diverse population, it's, you know, got more complex issues. And, but I have every confidence that the actual framework that Laura talked about will work just fine. We, we are doing some new things, however, that we've added to the project that we didn't do in Sisters, and that I've not done with other communities that I've worked with that we're, we're very excited about. At the very beginning of the process, as Laura mentioned, we're doing a series of listening sessions. This is something new. This is not like the visioning workshops that we do plan to do and have done in the past. This is giving the public a chance to sit back, take a breath, and talk about where they are at this moment of time. We've been through the wringer, as you all know, over the last couple of years, and we're just getting back into whatever that new normal will be. And we found that, and I've recently been working in a community in Wenatchee, in the Wenatchee, Washington area, where we used something very similar, but not as ambitious as we're planning in Bend. And it was really educational for us to just sit and listen what was on people's minds. And that helped us then frame the rest of the process so that we could speak to the, to the issues that we're, we're talking about. That's one thing we've added at the beginning of the process. After that, there will be online surveys, there'll be community workshops, there'll be focus groups, all those things, tools that we normally use in this process, culminating first in that big, long-term vision statement, but then also a much more concrete action plan. In the action plan, we're also taking a different turn this time around. We're, we're adding some things into the plan that we think are appropriate for a city and a community as big as, as Greater Bend. And that includes a number of things. One, as Laura mentioned, we're going to include some community indicators. That was not in the original vision. And by community indicators, what I mean is a set of measures where we can look at, well, how is the community doing over time in terms of achieving what's laid out in the plan? So it's really an accountability mechanism, if nothing else. And that's something that will be handed off to Envision Bend as a nonprofit. It will sort of become the seat of those community indicators. So they not only are working with partners to help see if we can get some of these actions accomplished, but we're also having a set of tools to be able to measure, are we really having an impact on affordability, or houselessness, or other problems that are, that the Bend area is dealing with now. The other feature we're adding to the plan that both Laura and I are really excited about is what we're called Ideas for Personal Action, because we realize we live in a time when all of us has to do our share to, to, you know, survive and to thrive in an era when we're confronted with a lot of serious issues. Fire, hearing you talk about the drought and fire at the beginning of the program just only reminds me of, you know, the big issues that we face. So we're going to add an element into the plan where people who read the plan, who, you know, Joe Citizen, who, you know, doesn't belong to a board, or work for a government agency, or has the power to do something, can say, what can I do in my own life, with my family, in our neighborhood? What can we do to help, for example, make the Bend area more fire-safe, or to make our community more affordable, or to help with people who have not been engaged, underrepresented populations? So there'll be that personal aspect. And we think by listening at the very beginning to what's on people's minds, and by giving them a tool at the end of the project where in our own lives we can undertake action, it'll make for a stronger community.
So along those lines, we need to make sure this is not a compete, I absolutely want to advocate, this is not a competing effort. You know, if we do a comprehensive plan at Deschutes County, we have professional planners, we have a planning commission, we have the tax authority, we have land uses as assigned by the state, and it can't be a competition of, hey, here's our plan, and those guys did this. I mean, it's got to be one team, one, one vision. You know, as I say, I like the branding idea, the, you know, and then things that may pop out. You know, we need to really focus on, you know, fuel reduction, or healthcare, or whatever these things, because the community conversations are always good. But, you know, a sly comment about, well, we're not government, that, that's just not going to work. You know, I mean, you're coming to, I represent the people with the government, and asking for money, right? But we've got to be complimentary on this one.
No, and we have met a few times with county staff, because we understand that that is so critical. We cannot compete. We need to add value to what you already are doing. And so communication is going to be critical, and I think we've really created the foundation for that. And the brand itself was indeed a conversation that we had with your staff about how we need to make sure that these things are not going to be confused and that they complement.
Yeah. I think so. Also, the nature of the, the plan that results, I mean, it is flying at a higher altitude in one, in one level. It's not a land use plan, or any kind of development plan, or even a, you know, a smaller community plan, like what I know you're considering, you know, in the Tumalo area. So I, I'm pretty confident that we can make sure that there is no conflict that way. And there's a couple of the things we're doing, as Laura mentioned earlier. At the very beginning, we're doing stakeholder interviews. We'll be reaching out, again, to county and other officials, you know, who are out in Deschutes County, or with organizations that have a broader regional reach, such as, you know, the school district, and the college, and COIC and others, for the same purpose. And part of that is gathering, what are the big plans and policies underway in all these institutions that we need to be aware of? Because you don't want to try and replicate or duplicate those in a vision-action plan. That's not the purpose. It's, the vision-action plan is more like icing on the cake. Where, what can we do that's not being done, that involves collaboration among all, you know, public, private sector businesses, community groups, that is not being achieved, or is the purpose of government plans?
Well, and then, just like you mentioned, a survey of the ongoing planning activities around this effort, but also, I mean, maybe that's a great opportunity to, you know, have the, you know, planning horizon playbook for that survey. As in, you know, as soon as a citizen comes in, remember, there's a comprehensive plan, there's long-range planning in the city, there's a planning efforts going on at the county, you know, so the education of the community around that, you know, instead of, you know, your effort knowing it, maybe that's part of this. You know, one of the first steps is, here's a, here's a webpage, you know, part of Envision Bend, with the five links to the comprehensive plan and the planning system of the state of Oregon. And now I'm helping you design your, your work, but I'm just thinking it through as we're talking.
Well, no, I think it's an excellent idea, you know, to have an educational component. We are reaching out to our so-called project partners now. Those are the organizations that really do have a big reach in terms of the different communities they speak to, not only to inform them what this project is going to be about, but also to find out, well, what are you doing, and, you know, where do we need to understand that. But even beyond that, I think you give, give us a great idea, and that is when we're doing our interviews, and in the online survey, is to have a little bit of explanation at the very beginning, what this is, what it isn't, where you can go for other information. And I think that will help people focus on the purpose of what we're doing, which is that higher-level vision.
And then just one other thing that comes to mind is, you know, working from home, high-speed internet, home delivery, you know, the world is a different place. And video conferencing, I just think of, we've had a camera on our laptop for the last, you know, 10, 15 years, but we all cut over as a society two years ago. I mean, one night, we was like, okay, we're all doing video. And that, we're still digesting what that even is. And we're hybrid here right now. People can be following this, they could even be, you know, raising their hand during public testimony and testifying remotely. So the world is absolutely a different place just from two years ago.
It is very much indeed. And I think it's that, I think that's at the heart and in the core of what Envision Bend is doing, is acknowledgement that we live in a period of really high-speed change. And, you know, if you're going to be proactive, you have to understand what that change is and get out in front of it, rather than chasing after it, because chasing after change doesn't work as well.
Or at least understand it, define it, and digest it. You know, I mean, it's, because sometimes we don't want that change, but it's happening.
Yeah, definitely is.
We are excited about the opportunities to reach deeper into the community because of our, our new versatility in connecting in different ways. I think that that's going to enable us to reach a broader, you know, group of people, to get input from the whole community.
That said, we're also keeping our fingers crossed that there's going to be some real face-to-face, you know?
Yes. We're happy to be here today.
Yes, thank you for joining us.
No, I really think face-to-face is so important, and that's one thing that as county commissioners, we kept our, we kept meeting in person, following the guidelines, of course. We maybe had our doors closed a couple times where we had to, but truly, there's so much to be gained by in-person. We are social creatures, and I feel like we accomplish so much more when we can see each other's face. It's just like seeing a doc, when you see your doctor in person, and he sees your face, and you may be saying one thing, but your face is showing something else. And there's a really subtle difference there that, you know... difference there that, you know, I think we've probably lost a little bit of that the last couple of years, but we, we truly need to bring it back. So I, I thank you for being in person today.
Yeah. That's, you know, it is one of the reasons that we're doing those listening sessions. Just for, you know, just, we've just had a little listening session here, I think, in a way. And that's what we really feel people are craving that right now. So with a little bit of luck, you know, those things are going to be face-to-face.
Well, I just think it's, it's kind of interesting how you talk about Sisters. Okay, they were like 500 people for a long, long, long time. But they truly branded their city, you know? They had their Western theme. And Sisters is a very sweet place to be, I'm from Sisters country. And truly, the community was really engaged on their plan. And now, even though there's a little over 3,000 people in the town itself, a friend of mine that moved there was sure there's now 15,000. That's how it feels, you know? And she hasn't been there that long, but she, you know, you feel the bustle and hustle of the community. So, yes, thank you for your work there.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I'm very excited to be seeing this move forward. I tracked the Bend 2030 process pretty closely 15 years ago. And I was able to see how visioning helps to bring a community together, and have them, help them articulate their hopes and dreams, and then organize in different ways, you know, in, you know, non, you know, frequently non-governmental, more informal collaborative partnership kinds of ways to, to, to make that vision a reality in so many ways. You know, one of the, one of your slides reflecting that, you know, the vast majority of the, the action items in the Bend 2030 vision have now been implemented, or are substantially along the way in progress is, is really exciting. And, you know, watching that happen, I, I definitely, I definitely feel that a plan, you know, a vision like that, it needs to be updated on a regular basis. And it, the fact that it's been 15 years, and the Bend 2030 vision, you know, while still timeless in, in some ways, is, is really outdated in other ways, and is not, it's not a reflection of the community at this moment in time. And is, you know, indicates to me that it is, this is a very good time to, to undertake an effort like this again. So thank you for leading the charge on that. And I'm, I'm very excited to see it happening.
Nick, do you want to just say something?
Thank you, Chair Adair. And certainly, having been a part of the Sisters process and project, you know, two of the, of the greatest values that I saw through the whole process were the role as the convener, just to bring everybody together, which is local governments, we often don't have that capacity. And it's such a valuable piece. And another piece, as you mentioned, is then measuring and monitoring progress over time. Again, something that local governments, we don't always have the capacity to, to do or do very well. My question is, with Sisters, you know, 90% of the land area was, was the rural county. 70% of the population was probably the rural county. Yet the city played such a significant role. They were so committed. They were such great partners throughout. They, they paid more than we did for the process. They attended every meeting. I'm just curious, you know, and then, and then I then had the benefit of participating in their comprehensive plan update before I transitioned to my new, new role. And I could see their, their progress in really referencing the vision through their comprehensive plan update. I'm just curious about your perspectives of, about the city of Bend, and their commitment, beyond the financial, because financial is just one piece, but their commitment to the process. Because this is going to be just the opposite. 90% of the land is going to be in the city. I mean, probably 98% of the population is in the city. And their commitment to the process, and then incorporating it into their plans, and et cetera going forward. Because I have a sense that we're going to be very involved, as we always are. Peter Gatawski and our team will be there. And as Commissioner DeBonne was saying, you know, one of the outcomes is going to be what the signature projects are. Well, if Deschutes County is there, we know that where the funding requests are going to come for those signature projects. And so I'm just curious about your thoughts about the city's commitment to the process, and then to implementation of the outcomes going forward. So any thoughts would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The city is very much behind this project. We have been assigned a liaison, which is Brian, who is Brian Rankin, who's the senior planning manager for the city of Bend. And he's very familiar with visioning, is a big believer in it, thinks it's important on that higher level to help inform other planning work underneath. He is our main point of contact with the city of Bend. The city's putting money behind the project. We also are working with other staff members at the city of Bend to ensure that we have a very inclusive, robust outreach process. So we've been meeting with Zavi Borja, who is a community liaison. We also are, just as a little sidebar, we're working with folks from COIC to make sure that we're reaching rural residents who we want to bring into the fold in this conversation as well. City has committed $50,000 to the project at this point. They know we're coming back in June, or early July, to ask for the second half of the, or the remainder of what equates to half of the cost of the project. I think that we wanted to ask for funding from the city incrementally to show that indeed, we are doing exactly what we said we were doing, because this is not a city project anymore. It is not their agenda that's driving that show. But you all probably know that, or perhaps don't know, that Eric King was originally hired to manage the visioning project for the city of Bend. That was part of his responsibility when he was hired, I think, as an assistant city manager. And he believes in this kind of work. He thinks it's really important. At the end of the day, these kinds of conversations really do bring communities together. They also can heal the fabric of the community, which I think will be a great benefit for this project. And so we feel like we're getting tremendous support. They want to have the same kind of communication as Deschutes County. We can't step on toes, we can't compete. And so that communication and collaboration is going to be really important, of course, with them as well.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us today. And Laura, if you'll send back in your packet for our budget committee, that would be wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Is there any color commentary by Mr. Schoenborn?
Yeah, I was going to ask about.
Dressed up for you.
I saw him taking notes the whole time back there.
He's definitely the best dressed one.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have item number eight on the agenda.
Morning Commissioners, Greg Munn, County Finance. And on page number 64, item number eight in the packet. And state statute requires that we bring the investment policy to the board at least once a year for review and approval. So that's what we're here to, to do today. The last time the board saw this was March of 2021, a year ago. And prior to this, bringing to the board, a review of the policy has been done. I've reached out to our investment brokers. We have six brokers that work with us, got their feedback. State Treasury is taking a look at it as well, and including our Investment Advisory Committee, IAC, which Commissioner Chang sits on as well. There were some slight changes that in the packet, you'll notice some slight wording changes that are highlighted in yellow. They're very minor. And those would be the items that would be suggested for approval. Normally, if there's significant changes to the policy, those changes are required to be reviewed by the short-term fund board, which is a much more lengthy process. It has, they meet four times a year, and we have to schedule that ahead of time. But because the changes were deemed to just be minor adjustments, that the, that the short-term fund board, or not the fund board, but State Treasury suggested that that wasn't needed in this case. So before you is consideration of approving the policy and authorizing the county administrator to sign the policy, which is similar to previous years.
So a couple of questions. I see that, you know, mitigated, switched to managed in many places.
Yes.
Is that, is there any, you know, it kind of, it reads, it might mean generally the same thing, but do you have any feel for mitigated, you know, mitigating risk is reducing risk. Managing risk is slightly different. I mean, is there any in-depth concept?
Yeah, and that was feedback we received from a couple of our brokers, who in their review of other policies suggested those wording changes. And it is slightly different. It's, it's really our job to, the, the policy constraints are very narrow already. So mitigating risk, so we're managing the risk within those policy constraints, I guess is probably a more accurate description.
That's the intention of the whole document anyways.
Yeah. And, and a little bit, we're probably splitting hairs, but.
Yep. Now, that helps, because it, that is the policy. It's very narrow already. That already helps. Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's actually the wonderful news about our policy, that it, we really do watch our risk, because we are, we're taking care of the taxpayers' money. And when you look at things that have happened to other communities, where they've, you know, they've lost millions of dollars because they didn't have the narrow range of investments that we are allowed to legally make. And truly, in today's world, with the risk going on, maybe our invest, our, definitely our investment return has been diminished excessively, but, you know, we still have our portfolio.
Yeah. And I would say that we have turned this over quite a bit inside out, with having so many different professionals look at it and give us advice. And, and for the most part, there wasn't a lot of suggestions that they had to really change the policy. And we, we talked about extending the term of maturities beyond five years. We talked about, you know, should we have the ability to invest in, in maybe some riskier instruments? Not risky, but riskier. We, you know, we really went through all of those factors. And I really feel like the general feedback was, we're doing pretty good. We have a pretty good policy set up. So.
Yeah. The, the fact that the, the policy, that the changes suggested are so minor, I think is a, is a reflection that the, that the policy that we have, that we had was pretty good. And, and yeah, that, on that mitigate versus manage question, we, we really do, we have, regulatorily, we have a, a pretty tight risk envelope set for us. And so trying to, within that envelope, give Greg and the Investment Advisory Committee as much flexibility as I can to, to, to see if they can increase returns a little bit within a, within a very low-risk envelope already, I think is a, is a good thing.
Understood.
So I take it Deschutes County doesn't have any Bitcoin investments?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well.
You should know.
Let's hope you know, right? No, if someone.
We have no direct Bitcoin investment.
There we go.
Yes, yes. Well.
Oh, so, yeah, somebody else?
Do we have any gold or silver?
Not that I'm aware of either.
I mean, I'm just.
And I, and I say not that I'm aware of, because of course, you know, we're invested in the PERS fund, which.
Right.
The PERS fund has a lot broader scope, and of course, takes on more risk, but in return for that, has a better return than we actually have in our investment policy.
So, yeah, some of the investments or, or instruments that are invested in might secondarily have something like.
And the PERS, and the PERS fund also is a much longer-looking fund. So, you know, they're looking out 30 years, where we're looking out maximum of five years.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the county investment policy F-10, and, and also move authorization of the county administrator to sign the policy document.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair of the House.
Thank you.
Greg?
Thank you.
Okay, we're now at item number nine. Kyle, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. Today, we are here to have a set of deliberations on a plan amendment zone change application for two 40-acre properties to the east of Bend. The file numbers on these are 247-21-000, 616-P-A, and 617-ZC. Both of these properties are owned by Dave Swisher. These deliberations follow a public hearing that the board held on February 2nd, which was followed by a 21-day open record period. There were a few comments received during that open record period. During the first period, there were some submittals by the applicant themselves, as well as Deschutes County legal counsel. During the rebuttal period, there were some comments submitted by Central Oregon Land Watch in relation to that first set of open record period comments. And then finally, a final legal argument from, from the applicant themselves. Each of the Commissioners here today has a decision matrix. There's five big discussion points that we can kind of go through one by one. I believe the board went through a very similar process to this a couple of weeks ago. So this will follow a similar pattern. We can just kind of walk through each one, open it up to discussion, and then have a, a general up or down vote on whether or not each of the Commissioners agree with what the hearings officer in this case rendered for each of those issue areas, or if they'd like to have other discussion and, and edit them in some way. Any questions before we launch into this?
No, thank you for printing it on giant papers, so that we can easily read it.
Of course.
Thank you, Kyle.
There's also a, a map on the back of this decision matrix, just to, to kind of orient yourself to where these properties are again. So the first big issue area just relates to growth management concerns in general that were raised by several surrounding residents. No specific approval criteria pointed to in these, but it primarily had to do with things like congestion on surrounding roadways that might occur with additional development on either of these two properties. Loss of groundwater associated with additional residential wells in the area, which will actually come up again in another, another issue. The applicant, however, pointed out that the county's comprehensive plan specifically anticipates the need for additional growth in the rural area, and that there is a specific mechanism that allows for rezoning farmlands with poor agriculturally designated soils to rural residential zoning designations, which is what this application proposes. They've specifically demonstrated that the subject properties are composed of poor, poor soils. We'll get into a little bit of how they've done that further down the line. But they also point out that there are several other properties in the surrounding area that have multiple-use agricultural zoning designations already, which is specifically what they're requesting under this. Again, the oppositional comments point out that the subject property may or may not be appropriate to serve future residential development. There may be better areas in the county closer to specifically the city of Bend's urban growth boundary to accommodate this type of growth. The hearings officer in this case, however, found that rezoning the property is consistent with Section 3.2 of our county comprehensive plan. And it does indeed, or will indeed, provide an orderly and efficient transition from urban areas to more rural areas of the county and agricultural lands. And that they specifically don't have the authority to deny those, this requested application on the basis of concerns about growth in general. Staff agrees with the hearings officer's findings in this case. But I would open it up to the Commissioners if they have any, any questions or comments they'd like to provide here.
Just kind of an observation, big picture, so that we're talking about a plan amendment, plan amendment and a zone change. So two steps in the process here. Plan amendment refers to going from exclusive farm use, which is resource land, to exception land, which is possibly not farmland. But I'm just acknowledging that MUA 10 is, you know, small parcel, probably not farmland for profit, but there could be agricultural-type activities on a small scale.
Correct, yeah. So the, the multiple-use agricultural zone, as the name suggests, does allow for farm uses and agricultural uses outright on those areas. So it's, it's not like agricultural use is being precluded with a change in the zoning from EFU currently to MUA 10 as the proposal.
And then it's always a function of water and soil conditions, which is a big picture.
Correct.
So I support the hearings officer decision.
And I, I do also.
Related to the, to the water concern raised, I mean, the, the likely pathway to water supply for, for these, these parcels, if they're, if it's chunked up into, you know, 10-acre pieces, is probably domestic, you know, an exempt domestic well. So, you know, one, one well for each of those, those properties that, that's developed. Is that, is that likely the?
Say, ultimately, that's not a portion of this proposal, though. I mean, really, the, the issues of where water supply is coming from typically comes at the land vision step, which is, may, may or may not happen. I, I don't know the specific plans for each of these properties. But given the location of this area of the county, and a majority of the properties surrounding this one are, are served by private residential wells. So presumably, that would happen here. But again, I, I don't know the specific plans for each of these lots.
Unless they want to work a deal for treated wastewater from the, the plant that's up, you know, on the other. Unless they want to work a deal for treated wastewater from the, the plant that's up, up, you know, on the other side of that property. Okay. Um, yeah, I, um, this, this point from the hearings officer that, 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 you know, in, in the hearing, hearings officer's opinion, they do not have the authority to deny the requested applications on the basis of concerns about growth as stated. I, I would support that as well.
All right. We can move along to the second big issue area then, which has to do specifically with traffic impacts on surrounding roadways. The opposition, again, in this case, didn't point out any specific approval criteria, but staff calls out the OAR language, which specifically requests traffic impact studies as a part of any type of plan amendment zone change application process. So a traffic engineer is hired. They measure what, what kind of the highest possible development, if a, a zone change were to occur on these, and then estimate what the impacts on the surrounding roadways are. That traffic impact study that was submitted with this application found there weren't going to be any, any significant changes related to what was already occurring out there, either from Abbey Road, which was kind of the, the roadway that actually supplies access to each of these lots, or Butler Market Road, which Abbey Road extends off of to the south. Outside of that traffic study, they noted that the classic estate slots, which are the two public comments that were submitted that called out traffic impacts as being a major concern, those are to the south of these individual lots. They're served by two roads, Peterman Lane and Parker Lane, and any traffic associated with development. These future lots wouldn't have any direct effect on either of those, those roadways. They're, they're far enough south and they're actually accessed through a few different ways, one of which is Butler Market. But given that that's an arterial roadway, it's already expanded to the size to, to meet that capacity. Those oppositional comments, however, they focus on what the current traffic trends are in the area, general traffic growth concerns, and the overall road design for, for the project. The hearings officer in this case found that the proposal would be consistent with the identified function, capacity, and performance standards of the roads in the area, that the changes wouldn't have any effects on the functional classification of any existing or planned transportation facilities in the area. The changes wouldn't allow any types of uses or levels of land uses that would result in major changes to travel or access, which are inconsistent with those functional classifications. And finally, it wouldn't reduce any performance standards of transportation facilities in the area below what the current requirements are in the county's transportation system plan. The applicant's traffic study was also evaluated by our senior transportation planner, who agreed with the methodology they're in and agreed with the major findings. And staff agrees in this particular case with both our senior transportation planner, as well as the hearings officer regarding traffic impacts.
Okay, so I can, I can agree with the hearing officer's decision.
And I support that also. You know, the functional classification and capacity of the system around that area is, you know, has been studied and it's been approved. Also, we know that the capital improvement plan and the big picture, we're going to be, you know, upgrading, maintaining, and adding capacity all around the county for many years to come. So I support the decision of the hearings officer.
As, as was the final point, similar to some of the growth management issues we just talked about, if either of these properties were to go through a land division process, at that point in time, there's also a secondary step to evaluate direct access to each of these properties. And if there's inadequate facilities to serve that, then they're required to, to upgrade it at that point in time.
Thank you for that, Kyle.
Yeah, I mean, clearly putting, you know, 10 or 20 additional homes out in that area, it, it, it changes traffic, but does it change traffic to a significant enough degree that it triggers some kind of criteria? I, I would, I would agree with the hearings officer's decision.
Okay. Moving on to our third big issue area, which has to do with farming and agricultural use on surrounding properties. As with the first two issue areas, the opposition in this case didn't point out any specific approval criteria. However, staff points out the OAR language, which identifies the applicant's required soil study as a part of any plan amendment or rezone change process, and how that would affect farmland in the surrounding area. The applicant in this case asserted that the subject properties are not suited to full-time commercial farming, both for primarily no water rights associated with either of these properties at any point in the past or currently. The poor soils on both of the lots is identified in their supplementary soil report, as well as the fact that, as we stated earlier, changing these properties to an MUA 10 zone wouldn't prohibit any type of hobby farming or non-commercial style farming. So agricultural uses are still allowed within these areas. The oppositional comments in this case focused on a concern that farm potential on this property and the surrounding properties would be impacted primarily from potential water impacts associated with residential well development or agricultural well development. The hearings officer in this finding found that both of the subject properties are comprised of Class VII and VIII soils, which are not identified as suitable for farm use according to the ORS language. Takes into consideration a bunch of different factors: soil fertility, climatic conditions, existing or future water rights that might be available, land use patterns in the general area. And they pointed to a significant amount of evidence in the record that supports the determination that neither of the subject properties can currently or likely in the future be primarily utilized for attaining profit through any type of agriculture or enterprise. In this particular case, staff agrees with the hearings officer's finding in this area. One of the big things that we actually evaluate through this plan amendment zone change process is not only the soils report for the individual properties, but what the surrounding pattern of land use in the area. As we discussed during the public hearing, the surrounding properties are split roughly 50-50 between MUA 10 properties, which is what this would transition into. Those are developed primarily with single-family dwellings. Some of them have hobby farming associated. There are some EFU properties in the area. Some of them have small-scale agricultural operations, hobby farms, things of that nature. But a majority of those properties as well are also developed with single-family residences. So this is a, a similar fit in types of land use development pattern in the area. And transitioning from EFU to MUA 10 likely wouldn't alter that in a significant way.
I support the hearings officer's conclusion, and, you know, it's good to understand that there is no history of, you know, just simple grazing opportunity there, obtaining a profit and money. So yeah, the, I support the decision as presented.
I do, and especially when you consider it's, it's a bit of a 50-50 neighborhood. So it, it's not like these are going to be the first two. It's, we already have a trend there.
These, these soil classifications are supported by the state, so I, I, I would, I would agree with the hearings officer's findings on this as well.
Okay. With that, we can move on to the fourth big issue area, which has to do with wildlife impacts. Specific concerns that were brought up, that there may be impacts to wildlife populations in the area on these subject properties. Neighbors have identified mule deer, several other types of, of wildlife that, that live in and around these properties. However, they don't point to any specific approval criteria in raising these oppositional concerns, as with the first three. The applicant in this case asserts that their burden of proof addresses the county comprehensive plan goals associated with these, rural development, everything up from recreation, energy, natural hazards, but also including, and this is important, open spaces, wildlife, and forest lands. However, the oppositional comments focus on preserving the subject property for perceived wildlife habitat value just based on wildlife sightings and anecdotal evidence. The hearings officer in this case found that the property doesn't include a wildlife overlay or a wildlife area combining zone, which is primarily how we deal with wildlife populations in Deschutes County. And importantly, no development at this point in time is actually proposed on either of these. So again, there's some nuance here, which is the proposal is specifically to change the plan amendment designation and the zoning on the property. There's no specific physical development being proposed at this time, even if that were to occur at some point in the future. Hearings officer found that the rezoning of the subject properties wouldn't in and of itself impact wildlife in any way, and that protections for the wildlife must be sanctioned by the county's Goal V Easy Analysis Wildlife Area, Combining Zone, or some similar type of wildlife overlay zone. Staff in this case agrees with the hearings officer, finds that primarily due to the, the lack of a wildlife area, combining zone on this, or any other type of wildlife protection zoning designation, there's no specifically cataloged wildlife populations in this area that require additional protections.
And at the, at the earlier hearing on this, on this property, I, I asked about the, the wildlife inventories that, that had just been recently completed. And these are not areas that will be coming into wildlife overlay zones based on those inventories.
That is correct, yes. So understanding is, at this time, even though none of those inventories have, have been approved or anything, obviously, and that's not, not privy to this current application, but looking into it, neither of these properties are included, most specifically in the mule deer overlay expansion.
With that, I, I will support this, the hearings officer's findings on this as well.
And I will also, and it's fascinating because we do have mule deer through our, our, our property. And it was so amazing. One day I had the radio on in the barn, and the mule deer were all there eating around the pond. And then I turned the radio off and they left. And I thought like, oh my gosh, did they actually, I mean, because, you know, you would think that the music, I mean, it wasn't loud or anything, but it was just kind of interesting to see that they left when the music went off. And I would have thought they, it would have been a reversal, so.
Were you listening to classical music?
No, I wasn't. I was listening to KSJJ. But it's, you know, anyway, but it was just kind of like, what a, you know, they don't seem to, I, I would have thought, because actually horses, it's not good. They, because they're a sensory, they listen, they hear. That's how they survive, because they flee from danger. And so they, music isn't really good to have on for them. I know where it makes cows give more milk if they have classical music. So yeah, but the deer seem to like it, so.
So I support the hearings officer's decision also.
Sorry about that?
I just.
Okay, now we're at number five.
Right out there.
Thank you, Kyle.
Of course. Yeah, the last, last big issue area is probably the most complex, so forgive me for having to dive into some nuance and, and big details of the, the state land use system here. But this has to do with the applicant's supplemental soil study that was provided as a part of their application. And the specific oppositional comments stated that that soil study does not legally alter the agricultural designations for the subject property, which are based on the National Resources Conservation Service Soil Classification System. So to, to flesh that out a little bit, the opposition states that the property meets the legal definition of, quote, "agricultural land" as identified in the OAR language. However, the applicant in this case submits that Goal III, which is the statewide land use goal that deals with agricultural lands, does not state that agricultural land is only land mapped by the NRCS soil studies as classes 1, 2, 3, classes 1 through 6. But the applicant argues that the DLCD rules do supplement that goal, and they allow that the mapped soils in classes 1 through 6 are agricultural land. But property owners have the right to challenge those NRCS soil studies by hiring a certified soil scientist to conduct a more detailed soil study for the property in question. They have to have the Department of Land Conservation and Development vet that soil study, so they actually look at the methodology that was proposed. And the state ultimately gives a thumbs up or a thumbs down whether or not they agree with that methodology. And then finally, that vetted soil study, if approved by DLCD, can be used in a specific plan amendment zone change application, which is what's occurring currently. The applicant calls out that a soil classification system and the soil study maps themselves are not one and the same thing, and that they have the right to challenge the NRCS mapping as allowed, both by the text of Goal III, the OAR, ORS language 215-21, 211. And in the event of conflict between those two, the ORS language actually controls over the conflicting provisions. They finally call out that the OAR language, which is what the ORS language actually gets pulled from, requires soil scientists to study and report on soils based on the soil classification system itself. So there's three kind of interlocking pieces here between the Goal III statewide land use systems, the OAR language, and then the ORS language that implements both of those underlying pieces. However, the oppositional comments state that lands that are classified as class 1 through 6 in the NRCS in eastern Oregon are identified as agricultural lands per se, and cannot be rezoned or reclassified without an exception to Goal III. The opposition states that the OAR, OAR language specifically states that any land meeting an NRCS class, class 1 through 6 classification shall be inventoried as agricultural land. The hearings officer found in this particular case that the NRCS soil study maps are not definitive or binding, and that specifically agricultural land can be rezoned without a Goal III exception if both a county's comprehensive plan calls out that process as allowed, which Deschutes County's does, and they go through the specific supplementary soil study process that's been vetted by the state used in a specific plan amendment zone change application. They cite some recent case law in this case, the ACETI case, which I think most of the Commissioners are aware of, which went through a very similar type of process. And in that case, Luba found that the county can rely on more detailed data on soil capability than provided by the NRCS, provided that the soil study has been vetted by DLCD in this particular case. And as such, hearings officer found that the applicant has met that burden of proof showing that these properties are not agricultural land, and they do not require an exception to Goal III interstate law and all the applications that are consistent with the policy and our comprehensive plan, which allows us to do that, which is 2.2.3. In this case, staff agrees with the hearings officer's findings on this issue area. And they, again, I want to point out some specific findings that were highlighted by county legal counsel that were submitted as a part of the open record period after the board's hearing. County legal counsel also pointed out the Luba decision on the ACETI case, and they were highlighting the allowance of a DLCD-certified soil study when making determinations of what are properly determined to be agricultural lands in Deschutes County. With that, I'll open it up. Any new discussion the Commissioners make?
One question, back to the soil analysis and the DLCD certification process. You mentioned the methodology to be certified or acknowledged. Is, is that also the results? Or is it just, is it going in or coming out of that process that DLCD acknowledges?
So DLCD doesn't make a determination whether or not the results themselves are conclusive, because they are not the jurisdiction actually making a determination or a finding on whether or not a rezone is, is allowed. That's up to us, as the local jurisdiction, to do. They basically are just looking at the soil study and saying, yes, we agree with the, the findings, not the findings, the methodology that they reached these findings, and thus this is liable and able to be used in a specific rezone application.
So it's kind of a half a step away from approving the product, but it is, yeah, it's kind of certifying the process and the, and the report itself.
Yes.
Okay, that's interesting.
What year was this ACETI case ruling?
2019, I believe.
Okay. I, I mean, I know we've, we've dealt with it.
So I support that logic and the hearings officer's decision in this process also.
And I want to thank you for going to county legal from that ACETI case, just going further and, and giving us that, that information, Kyle. I think it's relevant to what we're doing, and I, I do agree with this.
You can thank Adam Smith for that. He, he.
Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, if this, if this come, all comes back to the soil, and we have a, a soil study that, that, that the state has validated the methodology for, then I, I would agree with the hearings officer's decision as well.
Adam, I saw you pop up. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Adam, did you have any comments?
Uh, Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel. I, I have nothing to add. I think, uh, Kyle captured the issue quite well. Um, uh, this is not a, a new issue for Deschutes County, uh, as demonstrated by the Aseti case. Uh, the, this exact question has, uh, been debated, and, uh, we have guidance from, uh, at least that decision, and I would argue, uh, implicit guidance from several other decisions. Um, so I think Kyle captured the arguments, uh, well, and, uh, the current state of the law.
Thank you, Adam.
All right. Uh, with those big issue areas, I would open it up to any other general deliberations that the board might want to engage in. Um, otherwise, next big steps would be if the board does want to have a future date for more deliberations, they can set that now. Um, otherwise, we, at this point, could hold a vote on whether or not to, to uphold or overturn the hearings officer's recommendation in this particular case. Um, and either, either direction, we would come back with an actual written order at a future date to have a first and second reading.
Okay. Is there a motion by the board?
Uh, yeah, so I'll support that. Uh, you know, um, move approval or, or hear, we're in that same situation. Uh, accepting the hearings officer decision on the two file, both file numbers, two four seven twenty one six one six PA and six one seven ZC.
Just point of clarification, technically you're accepting the recommendation. He doesn't make a decision on this. It's ultimately for you folks.
Yep. No, that's good. So accepting that recommendation as the decision of the board.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair of the House, yes.
Thanks for such a thorough process and great detail. Thank you, Kyle. That was, uh, very informative and businesslike to get to that decision, so.
Yeah, of course. It's, it's a long process. Um, thanks again, uh, for everything today. And like I said, I'll be back in, in a couple of weeks for, um, a first reading of, of the order once you put that together.
If, if I could just flag for kind of longer term, bigger picture, um, thinking about issues like these, um, I, I don't think that our process, uh, addresses cumulative effects very well. So, I mean, you could see this, this proposal, I, I don't, I don't know how much, how much EFU with poor soils is in this general area. Um, but you could see this, this proposal come through and we could say, well, you know, that the significance of the, the traffic impacts of this proposal, the significance of the, you know, the groundwater impacts of this proposal, not very big. You know, move it forward. And then when the, you know, if another one comes in the next week and you say the same thing, and another one comes in the next week and you say the same thing, eventually you reach a point where you are talking about, you are talking about significant traffic impacts or significant groundwater impact. And I, um, I, I'm just curious how within our, our, our system of, of review, how we deal with that, or, or how, um, how we account for that as you, as you kind of review each subsequent, uh, application?
I mean, ultimately, these, these applications are evaluated on their individual merits.
Right.
Um, from a cumulative standpoint, I mean, every time a rezone, plan amendment zone change application comes forward, we're having to look at what that specific development is going to affect in terms of all surrounding properties. That has to do with transportation, agricultural impacts, land use patterns, et cetera. And so you're, you're right that there is potentially some threshold at which there are greater impacts that have, uh, increased over time to a point that one more straw is going to break the camel's back, so to speak. Um, but presumably that would actually be captured in a future plan amendment zone change process. So let's say another hundred acres wanted to, to redesignate their property. They also had poor soils. They had all the information that, that proved that, and they were going through the process. Presumably those, uh, cumulative impacts from previous plan amendment zone changes would have to be encapsulated in that new, that new project. Whether or not that's a perfect system and it would capture all possible impacts, I can't say. Uh, but that, that is ultimately the goal, how everything should happen moving forward.
That would be impacts associated with the zone change in the-
Correct.
Plan amendment. It wouldn't be impacts with the speculated development.
Future development.
That would be, you can't deal with that. That's not allowed.
We're only ever looking at the individual property itself.
I mean, and, uh, kind of along the same lines, if you received, um, i- i- if you received one large, you know, one application for a very large project, you know, a hundred, a hundred acres, a hundred fifty acres, something like that, thirty six acres, um, versus, you know, uh, you know, a ten acre application here, a ten acre application there, I, I mean, would, uh, I, I'm trying to understand how the consideration of ten small pieces versus one big piece covering the same area, you know, would, would, um, would, would the consideration of those applications and, and the, and the impacts, the cumulative impacts be, you know, essentially play out differently? Um, because those ten pieces came in one at a time versus one, you know, large, uh, one large piece, which, you know, to go back to like the traffic, the traffic study. I mean, you, you say, you know, I want to, I want to, uh, chunk a hundred acres into, into a lot of small, small parcels. I mean, that, i- i- it seems like the, the traffic study would be, would be more dramatic, uh, in that case than the one by one by one. And, and, you know, still just trying to get at this kind of idea of, uh, of this question of, you know, how does, you know, how do we, uh, evaluate the effects of, of, um, you know, a, a series of land use applications in a, in a kind of cumulative way?
And, uh- I got an idea. How about a comprehensive plan policy? I'm just joking around, but I mean, that's the other thing here. You know, a ten year horizon and a twenty year horizon.
That's the, if that is the way that we, if that is the way that we capture that, then, then-
I'm just saying, there, there is another layer of pro- planning. That's all right.
And then you have to think about, uh, Senate Bill three ninety-one, and we have seventy-eight hundred possibilities already existing, and then we have another two thousand, two acre pieces of property that would be eligible for that too. So, I mean, that's, that's quite a bit of housing in rural Deschutes County, but truly, um, how many people do we hear from on a daily basis that can't find a place to live? Well, I'd love to hear from you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, to, to reinforce, uh, legal counsel's perspective, it's important to remember that this plan amendment zone change creates a single lot of MUA ten property, which has afforded outright a single dwelling. So, uh, the action at this step is only creating a single dwelling right associated with it, and that any subsequent subdivision of the property would come through a full, uh, application, and that would be a moment to check for failing intersections. We definitely have had at times people come in with proposals that would, that would overload a failing intersection, and they've had to work to find a solution with other partners to fix that intersection. So, that's really in terms of traffic where the cumulative impacts comes in. Uh, you'd also see water reviewed at that time. It matters a lot if I have, uh, say, five hundred acres, if I make, if I split it into two lots versus fifty lots, it matters a lot. And so that's why that level of analysis is done when the lotting pattern comes, because with the lotting pattern comes the housing rights.
Okay. Commissioners, I just, I'm sorry, I've got to jump in.
Jump in.
Um, having had some experience with this in the past and other places too. So Commissioner DeBonne is exactly right. He can start with a comprehensive plan discussion and, and a policy framework that can then lead to codes. What does that look like? Another piece that Peter, uh, our community development director, Peter Gudowski, and I have talked about in the past, because these types of applications are not on a clock, there could be a policy that you, that the county only accepts these applications one time per year, and then you look at the bundle of applications at the same time. So that if you have three, four, eight rezones from, uh, resource zoning to exception zoning, then you can see, you can see, are they in the same area? What do those look like? And then the final piece, and I know this is not a popular piece, but I'm going to say it, is that our non-prime resource lands policy actually would have limited the number of subsequent rezonings from, for example, ten acre minimums to a twenty or thirty or forty acre minimum, but that was challenged and of course ultimately withdrawn. Um, so we are, this is the, this is the process that we continue to have in place today, absent another policy framework that can be an outcome of the comprehensive plan update.
To be clear, I mean, even if you corral those applications and process them at once, I mean, the criteria you're dealing with is for the, the zone change plan amendment. It's not some speculative development standards down the road. So you still have to examine it from the applicable criteria, and those being the criteria applicable to zone changes and plan amendments, not something that you assume is going to occur down the road, development. That gets dealt with at that time, and if you import it prematurely, you're violating someone's rights and we would lose that. You could do it, I guess, as a decision-making body, but our chances of prevailing at Luba or the Court of Appeals would be pretty slim.
And that could be a policy framework that comes out of the comprehensive plan, is to bundle them and to, and to change those criteria in our comprehensive plan. There are various ways. Yeah, I, I agree. I've just seen it in other jurisdictions outside of Oregon. Right.
Often in cases like this, I think Commissioner-
Yes.
-is getting at, the-
Yes.
The folks opposed to it are saying, I'm not necessarily opposed in a snapshot to what's occurring, but I know what's going to happen behind it. That may be, but you don't get to speculate and apply those criteria ahead of time to what's on the table in front of you. It's-
Hmm. Comprehensive planning. Where you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Will. Nice to see you, Peter. Item number ten. I think we see Shannon on this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you again. Uh, here today to talk about a request approval on a Pacific Source amendment. Um, this amendment is, uh, we recently signed our contract with, um, with Pacific Source, but this amends that and changes some language regarding wraparound work, um, which is specific to system of care and children. Um, so historically, wraparound, um, well, let me just back up a little bit. Wraparound is a fidelity approach to coordinating care for children who are at risk of out of home, school, or community placement due to significant mental health needs. Um, they have multiple system involvement, which includes, uh, or can include DHS juvenile. Um, it can include, uh, being on an IEP at school or having a specialized school plan. And so this is a process for which a, um, a fidelity trained care coordinator brings all people involved in the child's life together and creates one plan. So if you could imagine having a primary care provider, having a school counselor, having a mental health counselor, and a psychiatrist, um, all providing different interventions, this care coordinator brings everybody together so everyone's on the same, um, same page and the same plan, so care is not fragmented. Um, it's a national program. It's actually worldwide, but nationally, um, uh, it is, um, supported here locally through Portland State University and the system of care. And we've been doing this in Deschutes County since two thousand and four. Matter of fact, it was my first job at the county was as a wraparound care coordinator. So this amendment, um, looks to, uh, changing the payment structure. Historically, wraparound is funded through Medicaid and, uh, on a, um, on a individual billing service, and much of Medicaid is not, um, reimbursable for wraparound services. So what this amendment, amendment looks at is a per member per month rate versus an individual billing. And when I say Medicaid for individual fee for services and, um, is a billable, one example of that is that in the wraparound planning process, you can have multiple Medicaid providers, uh, like I said, a therapist, a case manager, a psychiatrist. Not all of them are able to bill only one. So this has been largely an underfunded program, and this effort moves to make this a sustainable, self-sufficient program. Um, so it moves from a, a, a fee for service model to a thirteen hundred and nineteen dollar per person enrolled, uh, per member per month. This effort will increase our revenue strength, strength, uh, for wraparound. Um, uh, in, in, it'll increase about eight hundred thousand dollars per year. So it'll make a fully, um, sustainable program. This effort has been done and been recommended throughout, um, uh, the United States in terms of per member per month. SAMSA has recommended it. And our, we went through a pretty thoughtful cost analysis to, to say, hey, what does it really cost us to, to, to run this program? And our rate of thirteen hundred and nineteen dollars is mid to competitive compared to other sites through, uh, the United States. Uh, for example, Milwaukee is one of the highest, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, which is one of the founding areas for wraparound, and they're fifteen hundred dollars a month compared to Georgia or Indiana, which are in the mid nine hundreds per member per month. Uh, this is super important as we expand services. Um, so, uh, as you are all likely aware or will remember, we, you're the recipient of a four million dollar, four-year system of care expansion grant that looks at expanding services to children, youth, and families, um, uh, with really significant complex needs. So these last few years, we have, we're year two of that grant, and we've significantly expanded services in Sisters and Redmond and, and in Lapine. So this, uh, per member per month rate is super important as part of the sustainability of that, um, of those positions moving forward, because it allows that infrastructure for a, uh, competitive and, um, uh, and, uh, supportive rate for services that we offer.
So Shannon, I see that we're estimating, uh, sixty-five youth. How many are currently enrolled?
Yeah. That estimate is what we currently have. So that's a great, um, question, Commissioner Darrell. We have sixty-five youth. Um, per wraparound fidelity, you cannot have any more than fifteen people assigned to one care coordinator. So, right now, we have four, uh, designated wraparound fidelity care coordinators, and then through system of care expansion, we've added three more that serve kind of a dual role. Um, as we continue to develop our systemic care expansion, we can see, uh, uh, over a hundred, hundred youth. So that, uh, I think where you're getting at there is that that number would increase in terms of revenue, the more individuals we serve. Right now, we see sixty-five, but we could, as we continue to expand in terms of system of care and really, uh, our services in Lapine, Sisters and, and Redmond, we could see up to a hundred youth.
And they're going to increase that? We're not-
That rate with that, yep. No, we will receive the thirteen nineteen for every single member. This is a cost estimate. You'll notice that it's a cost estimate simply because it, it is dependent upon how many youth we have in care. Likewise, if for some reason we dropped below sixty-five, we would see a, a decrease in revenue. But we've held pretty closely to sixty-five or seventy for over the last year, and with the addition of the, uh, the three fidelity trained, uh, wraparound care coordinators as part of system of care expansion, that number will increase.
So we do have the capacity to serve more?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we sure do.
Thank you.
And Shannon, did you say that, uh, this will result in a net revenue increase of eight hundred thousand dollars?
Approximately. And I know Cheryl was going to try to join. I don't know if she's in the waiting room, but, uh, yeah, approximately eight hundred thousand, which again, when we're looking at, um, we hired seven people as part of systemic care expansion, um, a supervisor, some administrative, and then clinicians. Um, uh, and so this will make that a sustainable program, um, moving forward.
So, so does that mean that under the old system where you were billing Medicaid for the services that you could, for the individuals that you could, there was, that we were only making, you, you, the revenue was only something like two hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's a, it's amazing what we, um, uh, what we bill for and then what we, what we get reimbursed for. Yeah, you're correct in that. Um, so that cost analysis said, hey, here's the true cost of what it, what it takes to do the business. And here's, and Cheryl's coming in now. So here's what, here's the true cost, and here's actually what we receive.
So for the, for these services that we're providing, we will be paid five times more, moving forward for, just for the same services that we've been providing? And then if we add more members, then we'll be paid more, or if there's less members, we'll be paid less?
Yeah. And I'm sure I can kind of add to that, but I see her shaking her head that that's accurate.
That is-
That is an accurate, um, evaluation.
Wow. Well, I'm-
This is a significant investment in children's mental health in our community.
Yeah, no, I, that, that sounds like a very welcome change.
Yeah, I think the part that I haven't mentioned is, is that, um, this will, the other really neat aspect of this is it'll allow us to provide services to individuals that are not necessarily open with Deschutes County Behavioral Health or Mental Health Services. It'll allow us to support- It'll allow us to support children and families who are maybe open with Brightways or a panel provider within our community. And right now, there's some significant barriers to that because if you are going to receive wraparound services, you have to be open with Deschutes County Behavioral Health for Mental Health Care. And families are often asked to tell their story multiple times. They're asked to work with multiple people simply for carrying their case administratively for billing purposes, and this admits that. And that's probably just on my end. I mean, the dollars are important, but the most important piece to me is that families will have easier access. The other piece is that wraparound is a coordinated planning process. So we need to be able to start this right away. If someone is hospitalized or in a crisis, we need to start this right away. And under our current fee-for-service model, we have to wait until they're opened up with a mental health therapist and wait for that treatment plan to be developed, where right now, we can meet the family where they're at, in the hospital or in the community, and start that process and help them get engaged in care and get those things set up. So it's not a mental health service per se, it's a coordinated planning process, which is really important in complex cases.
So one question. We've got the wraparound group, which could include mental health addictions, child welfare, ADD, juvenile justice, and education. With this revenue coming through, are there going to be partners looking for some of that as pass-through?
No, this revenue is for the coordination of care, the fidelity model that is implemented by us. So those community partners are, this revenue isn't pass-through to them. This is simply to pay for the wraparound process and the fidelity-trained personnel.
Great, thank you.
One more question about kind of the funding structure for this. So if we've been providing these services and not receiving Medicaid reimbursement for the full costs, what other funds have we been using to kind of fill the gap or to, you know, kind of to, you know, to square it all up so that, you know, that we can continue to provide those services? Because it'll be very exciting to free up those funds to put to other behavioral health needs. If that's what happens.
Jump in there. Part of it is with the system of care SAMSA federal grant, so we receive about $1 million per year for that. So this, as Shannon mentioned, will help with the sustainability of that. And the proposed plan is to reallocate some of the capitation, which goes to the program to fill the need across the department and other areas. So it will lessen the drawdown on our behavioral health reserves for the next two years.
Great. So when we see those behavioral health reserve projections at budget hearing time, they won't decline as steeply?
Precisely, yep.
Right to nil. Thank you.
Well, with that, I'll move approval on chair signature Pacific Source Amendment Number One by document number 2022-111.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Yes, thank you. Now, we have item number 11. And it looks like, Cara?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Cara Cronin, Program Manager for Deschutes County Behavioral Health. I'm here to present for board approval another Pacific Source contract for behavioral health, which is our choice model contract. This contract awards us $407,889 to provide supports for our most intensive adults, to provide services to them in the community. This funding has been really stable for us for the last five, six, seven years. It primarily goes to supporting our assertive community treatment team who serves serious and persistently mentally ill clients in the community with multiple services per And that's what this is.
So from my experience, these are kind of the contracts as they roll out through OHP and Pacific Source. So I mean, it's just, it's ready, you know, it's just the point in time when this thing's ready to go. You're saying there's a long history of this and it's a great, you know, service that we're providing.
You were saying that the funding is stable. So did we get the $407,000 last year, or was it more?
Yeah, it's the same amount, so it's been pretty flat. It hasn't increased or decreased.
So no recognition of cost of living or anything like that?
Nope.
Okay, flat. At least stable, stable and flat.
At least stable. Stable's good sometimes.
Got to focus on something positive.
Cara, for me, sometimes with the clinical and professional terminology we use around this work, it can feel a bit abstract. And I'm, you know, I feel like I have a sense of the work that's being done, but it would be very helpful for me to hear about a couple of examples of, you know, tell me about a client with serious and persistent mental illness. Like, what are they experiencing? And what kind of services are they going to get through this choice model services program? Take it out of the abstract for me a little bit.
Yeah. So what we primarily mean by that is a client with schizophrenia who's functioning very poorly, is often using higher levels of care, acute care, previously at the state hospital, though that hasn't been happening. They're impacted severely on a daily basis by their mental illness of hearing voices, seeing things, believing things that others might not see as true or valid. So this team and this money goes towards supporting them. So it could mean that the ACT team is seeing them maybe three times a week, maybe more. That could be a psychiatry appointment. That could be a nursing appointment, supporting them and getting medications that they need. That could be case managers supporting this client, getting into their PCP. That could be providing some skills training on how to grocery shop. It could mean supporting them in getting into housing, meeting their kind of basic needs. Does that provide some flavor?
Yeah, yeah. And by providing those day-to-day human support services, you're hopefully kind of managing the acuity of these people's challenges.
Yeah, and hopefully, in the process, they get to experience getting better, that they get to experience, you know, some joy and happiness in their lives and some stability. And what's often a really chaotic disease that, you know, is a different path in life and a difficult one.
Thank you.
So Cara, on Monday, I gave the governor the third letter on opening up Deer Ridge. Truly, we need a psychiatric hospital. I know that there are people in our community that are wandering around with horrible mental health issues and truly, you know, seeing someone three days a week at the point that they're in is not really, it's not enough. So I can only hope that something will happen on this side of the mountain because the state hospital is, what is the word? It's persistently, it's full, and there are no beds available for people in our community that truly need more help. But I thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think I read in this staff report that there's a significant nexus with civil commitment. So I mean, are many of the people being served through this program likely to, you know, likely to be the focus of civil commitment processes if, you know, but for these services? Is that?
Yeah, absolutely. And some of the criteria is that they're at risk for civil commitment, or they're under civil commitment, or have been on civil commitment in the last 12 months. So yeah, it is definitely entwined with our civil commitment process.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of chair signature of document number 2022-233, Pacific Source Choice Model Services Agreement.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you so much for your time today.
And thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, we're at item number 12. It looks like Tom Kuhn should be on. We're a few minutes early, but not really.
Chair Adair, we can also move to the next item if that's helpful with health services as well.
All right, we'll come back to that one. Okay, item number 13. The release of ARPA funds.
Welcome. Look at that big smile with the mask.
Have you all seen my face?
Just on camera.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator and also interim Health Services Director. Joining me this morning is Nahad Saadra Azodi, our Director of Public Health, and Gerald Smallman, the Health Business Officer. What we'd like to talk to the board about is the COVID response team. Just for background, the board has set aside ARPA funds for COVID response and also other public health needs. And then the department comes to the board, makes a request for a release of those funds. On February 9th, the board approved up to $350,000 to support the COVID response team, and that was at a rate of approximately $55,000 per week. First, I want to point out a couple, two corrections in the staff report.
Yes, the months.
I knew you would get that. I bet you have it written down.
I know, I read that and I went, oh, brother.
In the supplemental budget request, you'll see that I'm asking for an intern so I could blame him or her, but until I have that, I need to take responsibility. So the first, as Chair Adair pointed out, that the current allocation of $350,000 will last for approximately seven weeks, not seven months, which is contained in the staff report. The other correction is, at the beginning of the staff report, it talks about the COVID response team. And the COVID response team includes limited-duration positions. The staff report says six, but really, it's more like 14. So there's limited-duration positions, and then there's also temporary employees, and that's what makes up the COVID response team. So going back to the board's previous action, the $55,000 per week, and really what we want to do is frame the policy discussion for the board this morning. The $55,000 a week provides coverage for five main areas. The first is the COVID hotline. The second is testing. Although the county doesn't directly do the testing, the county is involved with coordinating testing throughout the community. The third area is vaccination. The fourth area is outbreak response for high-consequence settings, such as congregate settings, daycare, schools, and businesses. And then the fifth area is the wraparound services associated with the isolation motel. So the board has approved the 350. That gets us through the end of April. And so today's discussion is, what does the board want to see after that? There is still $1.8 million that the board has set aside for COVID response, health unattended consequences, and the public health response contingency. So that ties back to the ARPA spreadsheets that Finance provides to the board, and then they have numbered line items. So the $1.8 million is contained in, this is not in the staff report, but it's line 77 and 85 from those ARPA pages.
So you're saying two lines, then, 77 and line 85?
Correct.
And what does that funding total that isn't allocated then?
$1.8 million.
Okay.
And those categories, again, are health unattended consequences and public health response contingency. So part of what we'd like to discuss today is really, we want to talk about the different service levels that the board would like to see, and then we've outlined how much those cost. Of course, as we've known from the last two years, things change, and things change quickly. What we're proposing is that we would taper down services and respond accordingly. You know, right now, we're, of course, seeing a decrease in demand for these services. And in fact, we've adjusted our weekly spending based on that decreased demand. So rather than spending $55,000 per week, that's kind of the ceiling. The last, when I wrote the staff report, the first week of March was more like, I think it was like $38,000. So the department has ramped down that based on demand.
You said 32 in the.
Oh, 32, okay. Thank you for that correction. Of course, if the demand goes up based on the BA2 variant, then the services wouldn't, you know, would need to be ramped up again. What we're trying to do is taper down services so that we can adjust either way. If we were abrupt about it and did not continue the employment of the temporary employees, if we ended that abruptly and needed to change back, it would take several weeks to ramp that back up, ramp back up the infrastructure.
I have a question. What happened to the flu? The flu? We didn't have the flu last year, and did we have the flu this year at all? You know, the flu that we normally, we get flu shots for? I just wondered.
Yeah, in terms of flu activities, Commissioner, we've had a mild season from the weekly surveillance reports that we see, which is not frankly very comprehensive. It's more of a sentinel-based surveillance. We have observed limited activities when it comes to flu.
For the last two years, then?
Yeah, and part of that could be based on the mitigation factors that are in place for COVID. So that could be playing a role in this. We're still waiting to see what the flu coverage, vaccination coverage for this past season has been like. So we don't have those data yet, but I hope, based on risk perception, our community responded by getting the flu vaccine as well.
What was the percentage of getting the flu vaccine? Do we have that?
No, we're waiting for the data. As far as I know, I haven't seen them, but it usually takes a few months because we're still technically in the season. So it takes a few months for us to see those data. So a combination of population immunity and the mitigation factors have probably lessened the burden of flu season.
It's interesting because I look at the numbers every day from the state. And, okay, we were, you know, we were up at the top for a long time, and fortunately, our hospitalization numbers were okay. But we had 20 cases yesterday, and then again, you know that people are getting their own COVID tests and they're doing it at home, and they're probably not going into the state numbers, I would assume. Or I would estimate that they're probably not. Or I would estimate that they're probably not going into the numbers. But, okay, so we had 20 cases. I think our number last week was pretty decent, wasn't it, Nahad? Do you remember what it was?
The total number for the week?
Yeah.
Yeah, it has dropped significantly.
Right. It's really dropped. So, are we still using those temporary people?
Our staff?
Uh-huh. Well, okay, you said we had 14. It's not six, but it's really 14, limited duration, plus temporaries on top?
Yes, and that's the...
Yes, and the temporary, and that group of staff, both the limited duration and the temporary, provide those five levels of service that are on the current slide.
Right.
Five main service areas.
So, we're not doing, as you're well aware, Commissioner, we're not, we've shifted strategy based on state guidelines. We're not doing contact tracing. We're not doing case investigation. The focus is mostly on consequential congregate setting outbreak response. So, that's an area where long-term care facilities, adult foster homes and equivalents, we focus on controlling outbreaks in those settings to minimize any morbidity or mortality. We're still continuing to provide vaccines to our especially remote populations, hard-to-reach populations. So, those are still ongoing. Our call center is still functioning as efficiently as possible, making sure that those who want to connect with a local number and local staff and people of the community, they're able to do so. We're still continuing with our outreach efforts when it comes to wraparound services and bilingual communities and bicultural communities. We provide services in multiple languages. So, we're doing still all of these, we're carrying out these processes still.
Are we totally responsible for the call center, then? We were doing it originally with St. Charles, but we are now the only group that's answering the phone, right?
Yeah, it's been many months that this responsibility has been taken on.
So, how many calls a week do we get? Do we have that tabulated?
We're averaging, so it has vacillated from, the range has been from a few dozen to 350, 400 during the height of the surge. In recent weeks, we're averaging 34, 35 calls a day.
A day, okay.
And that's what's shown in these charts.
Yes, the call center stats, those are about a couple of weeks old.
What I shared is actually as of a couple of days ago.
Okay. So, what's in the staff report is a little bit older than what Nahad just shared is a more...
That's what we need to hear, is what's happening today, because it has truly, you know, it went up so high, and if those numbers would have been relative, you know, to Delta, where so many people ended up in the hospital, but fortunately, Omicron, you know, the numbers didn't go in the hospital. A lot of people had it, but, you know, it wasn't as impactful as Delta.
Yeah, there, if I may add, there's still, there is growing anxiety around BA2 variant, as Eric mentioned, so people are calling in to find out more about that. There's still people calling in for where they can get their tests, and especially with summer coming and international travels and requirements for that, they want to know where they can get a rapid PCR, for example. Vaccination, I anticipate some growing calls around vaccination when probably a second set of booster dose or, yeah, additional dose becomes available for older populations. That's very likely to generate some more calls. When under five vaccines become available, probably in the next few weeks, they'll probably generate some more calls, too. So, this is really a resource, the call center is really a resource for the community, because some people just feel more comfortable calling locally than calling Salem or Portland. Although, I don't want to say anything negative about the state call center. We rely on them. They're very helpful as well. So, we need to complement each other, in my view.
I think I called them.
I know, yes.
And they were really good. And that was actually nice to know, that they actually answered the phone, they had a good answer, and, yeah.
They told me a mystery caller called from...
Mystery caller.
No, I identified myself. It was like, oh, my gosh, you answered the phone? This is good?
They called from their barn in Sisters Country.
With country music in the background.
Oh, brother.
And I think the fact that many people in our community feel more comfortable calling our call center is a reflection of high levels of community trust in our public health team and our COVID response team. And that, you know, to me, that's a good thing, that faith and belief in, you know, in the county and their local public health authority is there. And we want to make sure that we are responsive enough to community needs, that we can maintain that faith in our capacity and to serve their needs. So, as I'm, you know, looking at this situation, I'm, you know, I'm quite relieved that we have low numbers right now, and that we can, we've been able to ramp down our, you know, our team to a certain degree. I want to be sure that if a new variant emerges, we are able to quickly respond. And that, so there's this real balance between, you know, kind of paring down to, you know, paring down to a level of staffing that's appropriate for current caseload and current, you know, concern in the community, but also, you know, not hamstringing ourselves so that we're caught flat-footed if a new variant emerges and we have another wave. I mean, because we basically, through the history of this pandemic, we have seen, we have a wave, we have maybe a month or two break, then we have another wave, and maybe that cycle is breaking now, maybe not, but, I mean, if there's going to be another wave in a month or two, then we want to be able to respond to that. You know, the results of the audit, you know, showed that we have done a very good job of dialing up and dialing down our response capacity as needed, you know, in tune with the kind of pattern of the pandemic. That, to me, suggests that we have good people watching the pandemic on a day-to-day basis and trying to forecast and trying to be strategic about how we ensure an adequate response, you know, every day and looking forward. So, you know, with that, I mean, on these questions of, you know, you know, how much do we, how much we want to, what is our up-toamount per week that we're authorizing, and, you know, how long do we want this weekly up-toamount to go for? I actually would like to hear a recommendation, rather than, you know, the three of us speculating about what's the appropriate level or not.
Well, really, for us, the important discussion is what is the Board's expectation? And the staff report attempts to kind of outline the different service levels. There's differences based on each of those five categories that are on the slide. The easiest one to talk about is the COVID hotline. Currently, the COVID hotline is the same hours as a state hotline, so it runs Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday's 10:00 to 4:00, and then on Sundays, it's closed, but staff check voicemails.
It says 5:00 p.m. on this memo. Are you cutting it back an hour?
Uh, no.
On the 30K per week, it says 9:00 to 5:00.
I think you're talking about the 55K level.
Yeah, the 55K is the current hotline hours mirror the state. If we have a reduced, if we have reduced hours, we recommend, and this is under the $30,000 a week model, then we would go from Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00, rather than 8:00 to 6:00. We would just check voicemails on Saturdays rather than answering the phone, and then there would be no Sunday outreach. So, really, we're trying to show different levels of service to meet, and whatever the Board's expectations are, that kind of drives the cost. So, we're trying to frame it as a Board policy discussion or decision.
Well, I mean, on the question of expectations, I guess, I would rephrase what I just said as, you know, I want us to, you know, take advantage of this, take advantage of this break in, you know, case levels in our community to the extent that we can, to save money and give people a break. But I really want to make sure that we are able to surge as needed quickly. And if that means that we need to carry a certain amount of, a certain amount more people than the bare, you know, skeleton crew at this point in time to be able to respond quickly as needed, then that would be my preference.
Couple thoughts. You know, it was mentioned, kind of, the equity in our community and different populations. You know, let's stay focused on that. You know, if the numbers are different and there's different, you know, information flow or cultural expectation there, let's make sure we're focused on that right now. I mean, that's a good area. But also, maybe this is our opportunity to promote primary provider, you know, connections. I don't know, I'd like to learn about that, I guess, is my thought. You know, primary providers, if I was going to go to the doctor and we have a vaccine available and I'm not feeling well today, you know, maybe there's a huge opportunity for outreach and connectivity there for people to say, oh, yeah, I should probably, now that we're not in a surge, take some time and get to know, what do I do? What doctor do I go see if I'm not feeling well? So, as I say, that's kind of jumping tracks on you a little bit, but I'm just thinking, what would I want to invest in, or what could we get excited about? Also, you know, having some of this surge capacity. We don't know exactly where we're at right now. So, whatever we do, I'm envisioning dialing it down a little bit, but not letting go of everything. So, putting a little bit of structure to the conversation here.
Well, we've definitely dropped significantly from the 4,500 or whatever cases we had a week, when it was, you know, we were at the top, and we got a lot of whatever over it, but the good news was, if we didn't really end up with that many people in the hospital, thank goodness. So, you know, we're definitely down here, and I do believe that the teams need to have a break as much as they can. You know, the people that have really been working hard for two years, so, you know, definitely, they've worked really hard. But I would say, cut back on the phone system. If we're only getting 35 calls a day, that seems like someone could actually be answering the phone and doing something else. You know, are they just sitting there answering this phone? Yeah, I would think.
Waiting for it to ring.
Yeah, I would think 35 calls a day, yes, they could be doing, you know, so hopefully we can, you know, and if we need to change that direction, surely we can.
But the question is...
Does the Board want us to change the hours of the hotline? I mean, the 35 calls was kind of the low number, but, I mean, we're, if the Board would like us to change the hotline hours, that's a Board, I mean, that's a Board policy decision. We're happy to do that accordingly.
Okay, so will the phone go through to the state number, then? If we're not answering it, doesn't it get answered by the state?
If it gets, does it get forwarded?
Automatically forwarded?
There are some options for that. There's also a voice message where people listen to, we're not available at this time, you can call this other number and what have you. So, we have that arrangement. And just to be clear on the staffing piece of this, we have adjusted our staffing hours and the numbers according to the calls that are coming in as well. So, when we schedule, when we schedule a staff member, let's say for four hours, or two hours, or three hours, because they're temporary staff and they have some flexibility around that, is it possible that they're sitting there for an hour, they're not getting a call? Sure, that's of course possible. At the same time, usually, we try to maximize their time where they're available for the calls that they're getting as well. We can't predict whether the call is coming at 11:00 o'clock, or 4:00 o'clock, or 2:00 o'clock. So, we just have to be, there is some level of inefficiency built into that regardless of what service level we want to provide at which point.
But it's probably like the 911 call center, where during peak demand, there are more temporary staff there. And then during, you know, based on previous data, when there are hours of less calls, then there's less people there.
Yeah, and we have those numbers. We know what the peak hours are and everything, and things change, of course, now with the surge going down. Certainly, there's some system changes in all this. And Commissioner DeBon, I think you were alluding to this analogy, which I really appreciate, because that's what I've been communicating with my team as well, in that we cannot really function based on an on-and-off switch here. It probably needs to be more of a valve, where we kind of open it up, tighten it up, depending on what's happening outside. And really, I think that's what, as Eric is mentioning, the scenarios we're presenting are reflective of this valve analogy.
Yeah, and I want to be very mindful about not sending people away that we have invested a tremendous amount in and who have a whole lot of experience with, you know, with COVID response for us, and not being able to get them back. So, you know, I don't know if that is one of the potential risks of, you know, with call takers, or, you know, with, you know, others of the temporary or limited duration staff, but, I mean, those people are honed and seasoned and, you know, able to perform at a highly efficient and functional level now. And if we cut them completely loose, then, you know, then they're gone. So, I mean, one of the questions I want to ask is, are there, you know, to kind of maintain people who would be very helpful to have available if there is another surge in COVID, you know, are there other, other public health duties they could cross-train in, you know, during this period? You know, like, we, you know, you are a, I mean, you know, when Eric just mentioned 911, I was just like, gee, you know, like, would any of these people be suitable to offer, like, hey, would you like to cross-train to be a 911 dispatcher? See, you know, see if it might interest you, and then, you know, if we eventually reach a point where we're really comfortable that that person is not needed for COVID response, you know, maybe it's very easy for them to plug in in a kind of part-time or, you know, flex surge basis with 911, or just what, so we don't lose that skill and experience, you know, are there ways that we can keep people on board, but, you know, use them to do other things that we need to be done?
Yeah, please.
And Cheryl, I think is on the, so what I'm going to say, Cheryl, if it's not correct, feel free to correct me. I think, Commissioner, to a great extent, what you're suggesting is going to be driven by the funding source and the allowables. So, currently, the temporary positions are being supported through ARPA funds, and thanks, that's thanks to your generosity. And there are stipulations around ARPA funds, and Cheryl, you're welcome to elaborate, if you like.
That's precisely correct, Nahad. ARPA funds are a bit more flexible than some of the other funds we use to support the temporary staff, so something like FEMA, which we found out is extended through the end of June, the activities have to directly relate to vaccine outreach and delivery. So, ARPA would allow for some redirecting of activities of these staff, as long as it's related to public health. I think that's a pretty safe, reasonable assumption. Anything outside of that may need to be further researched.
But isn't 911 public health? I mean, when you think about it, people are calling because of health issues when you call 911. I mean, it would be wonderful if we, if those people really have the personality that could work at 911. What is the average salary for those temporary employees? Hourly?
Hourly, it ranges, Commissioner, somewhere between $30, $40. It could go a bit above, depending on the skill set, go a little bit below, depending on the expectations. And there's a premium on that, right? So, the staff don't get all the salary, they don't get all the hourly wage. 20%, 25% of that, as evident in David Given's audits, is diverted to the recruitment entity. Cheryl, do you want to add?
Yeah, a good rule of thumb that I would recommend is, we, as the county, pay about $44 per hour for temporary staff costs.
Thank you, Cheryl.
But the wage that they're actually getting is some fraction of that?
Correct.
On the 911 piece... On the 911 piece, I mean, the, the first step of 911 is to qualify to become a call taker. So it, I don't think we would be able to just move staff to do that because, as you recall from, you know, 911 meetings, the, the training involved to even become a call taker is extensive and a very long period of time. But, but I do think it's a good idea to talk to Sarah Crosswhite to say, look, we have a pool of, of potential 911 call takers or operators, not operators, telecommunications, and, and get them information should they be interested in that career. But I don't, I don't think we would be able to send them to 911 for a month or two weeks because of, of the extensive background check process and, and training necessary to become a call taker and then even further to become a telecommunicator.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, if they're, if they're, if they're plugged in online in our, you know, in, they, they don't go to a central location, right? They're, they're doing that from, are they, you know, all, all of the, the, is, is the call, is the COVID team call center an actual physical center? Or is it sort of a virtual? It's a virtual center. So, I mean, if they are, you know, I don't know how this could work. If we're in a place where we want to maintain a certain number of them, we know that the call volume is low, but we want, you know, we, we want to basically provide them with a certain number of hours so that they could, that they'll stick with us. I mean, you know, maybe you can plug people in for some hours where, yeah, Sarah would, you know, give them, you know, kind of give them a, an overview presentation, you know, for a couple hours and, and answer people's questions. And then if there are some people who are interested in pursuing that, you know, you could kind of weave in a certain amount. I don't know how, how much time the 911 training takes, but I mean, you could, you could weave in a certain number of hours, again, to, 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 to keep, keep capacity available and, you know, and see, see where it goes. I mean, I don't, I don't know if any of them would be interested, you know, you know, probably there'd be people interested in hearing, you know, kind of Sarah's pitch, but, you know, is anyone going to be interested in, in, in pursuing training after that? Maybe, maybe not.
We can only hope.
I'd be happy to reach out to Sarah to talk about some of these ideas.
She's actually watching right now. If you have any, any input that you're seeking right now or any questions or any clarifications, she's just shared with me. She's available if you have any questions.
Well, a couple of years ago, she actually gave us cards that if we met dynamic people that seemed to have that kind of a personality that could handle the pressure of 911, to give them a card and have them call her. So I know I've run out of those cards, but truly, if these people are doing such a good job with doing our call center and the capacity now, if it's really six-minute calls, that's like 3.5 hours a day average, you know, maybe some of those people can move over. I realize they just can't answer a phone call after that, but still, if they have that, you know, it takes a special person in order to work at 911. I truly understand that.
Would the board like to hear from Sarah? Sounds like she's available.
Sure. I mean, and I also, I don't want to get, you know, it'd be great to hear from Sarah, but I don't want to like get fixated on this one specific example. But the, the, the basic question is, are there, are there other things that some of these temporary or limited duration staff can be doing to support county work that allows us to keep them around and maintain the, the minimum capacity that, that's needed so that we can respond quickly to a surge if, if one comes?
And Commissioner, maybe before Sarah speaks to, Sarah, right?
Yeah.
I think some of that depends on the board's, the authorities' expectations around service level, because we could keep staff, temporary staff, just at a minimum level and make sure we are providing seven days a week service. And we are still providing, for example, a pop-up clinic in Lepine and Sisters, even if minimal people, number of people are coming in and getting vaccinated. We could continue to provide multilingual wraparound and outreach services. So it really depends on the service level that the board would like to see from your executive body, which is, I suppose, us, right? So that's, I think that's where, that's why it feels like maybe we're going back and forth, is that we like to get some clarity from the board on your expectations. And based on that, adjust our capacity to meet those expectations. And then obviously, the funding would mirror that.
Well, I really personally liked what Commissioner Devon said about seeing your personal doctor. Truly, the last two years have been lost on that in our community. The fact that we have thousands of elective surgeries that have been postponed and postponed. Hopefully, they're catching them up now. But people really need to see their personal physicians and get back into some kind of a routine. Remember when we were looking at the fact that a lot of children haven't been vaccinated? So there's a lot of things that personal physicians can do that we as public health, I don't believe can, can do. And we really need our community to get back and see their physician.
I mean, pre-COVID, one of the, one of the key focuses of our public health department was to address the needs of people who don't have primary care providers. And I don't know, Nahad or Eric, if you have a, you know, a statistics off the top of your head, but I mean, there are, there are thousands and thousands of people in our community who do not have a primary care provider. The people who do, because of their insurance status, you know, I 100% agree that they should be, they should be, you know, getting together with their primary care provider, tending to, you know, deferred health needs and things that we've all been distracted from during the, during the pandemic. But for the people who don't have, you know, a primary, primary care provider because of their insurance status, you know, that, we, we can't expect primary care providers to carry the load of COVID education, COVID response for the entire community if a, a large fraction of our population doesn't have a primary care provider.
Well, I know per the Health Council that the number of people applying went up like 18,000, something like that. I mean, it went up a significant number during COVID for getting insurance through that plan.
Through OHP or through?
Right, you know, through the Medicaid, Medicaid plans. So, yes, it, it went up incredibly significant, which, you know, wasn't, it was, it was good. People were signing up.
Well, then that's another opportunity, you know, if we have Oregon Health Plan, if we have a working adult who doesn't insured to the level of what they can go to their A doctor, they're, they're hesitant to do it. I mean, this is, this is the window of opportunity to learn about that. What are the disconnects? I mean, this is another opportunity with these outreach efforts, with these dollars, with these temporary staff to help people get connected or understand, because some of it's just perception. Oh, I can't go in there because I don't have insurance. Okay, well, what's option two? What's option three?
Right.
We, we can, again, I'm jumping in front of Sarah, so I'm so sorry.
We almost had her in.
Commissioner, we, if the guidance for us as one of your departments is to look at the infrastructure needed for us to connect people to primary care providers, we can look into that and come up with a proposal for your consideration, depending on how much of it really makes sense to be within our shop or not. We looked at this a few months ago as an opportunity to maybe link, find people, primary care housing, right? But it's not a matter of somebody just, when talking to someone saying, hey, do you have a care, primary care provider? If not, you know, you can do X, Y, and Z. It takes more than that. It's an infrastructure that we need to put in place. So if that's your guidance, certainly we can take that on. And I'm not necessarily suggesting that we should take it on under, over the platform of COVID. It's probably something that requires something outside of COVID as well. But we're happy to take that on, Commissioner.
We could also, and I'm kind of speaking outside my, my lane, but look at the scripts provided to the hotline employees. And I don't know if they currently do this, but, but if, ask, I mean, the first early question is, is do you have a primary care doctor? If so, if, if you need assistance or, or, you know, vaccine, that might be a good avenue.
Yeah, we, we looked at, we looked at that in particular because, as you know very well, treatment options are still limited. Not everyone can access them. And one way to, well, one way is to get tested, get confirmed and all that. And the second piece of it is to go through a primary provider. So we certainly looked at how we could make sure that those who really needed access to treatment would get them and how we can link them to a primary provider. But it's not that straightforward. It really requires some structural support for that individual to get connected to a primary provider and then make the mechanics of it work. There's a lot of paperwork involved as well.
That's if they don't, that's if they don't have a primary care provider.
If they don't have it, we're talking about.
But you guys, I think one of the things that have happened because of COVID, not only as our country gained weight, we haven't, you know, all these things happen that have to do with the health of our nation, the health of our county. And I really think that getting people back to see a doctor is critically important, getting them back outside, healthy. Truly, if you look at the big numbers from COVID, you realize that a lot of, a lot of people are, more people in America are on antidepressants now than ever before. We've got to like really get people back to, you know, truly making healthy choices.
We agree. Doctors and dentists.
Right, dentists too.
I think I maxed out my dental plan this year because of skipping during COVID.
Oh, no, I know. I, I, when we saw our dentist, oh my gosh, the things that they have seen and truly, yeah, there's a lot of really important things that people need to recognize that you've, you know, it's, it really, there is a reason why you're supposed to see your doctor once a year and your dentist more than once a year.
Would the board like to hear from Sarah now?
Yes, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah. You're so patient.
Good morning.
Do you need any more background information, Sarah, or did you hear the whole discussion about?
No, I did hear the whole discussion.
We were trying to find new people.
Everybody.
Yeah, is there any kind of an opportunity somewhere in here for, for recruitment and cross-training?
Yeah, I love that you guys are thinking outside of the box. That's kind of, when I'm listening to it, I'm like, oh, that's intriguing. I, I would hope that if that was an opportunity, we would have some people that would be interested in sticking around with the county and joining 911's ranks. I do think that one of the things to always consider is that we have that, you know, two to three month, potentially four month of training for call taking and people have to work shift work and go over for the academy for three weeks. So, you know, I'm just not sure what, if the people that are doing these current positions, if that's something that interests them, but that would be really intriguing. And we would love to do an open house and bring them in and kind of introduce them to what the job's about. So if we do have some people that are interested that you guys are looking to keep around, send them my way. We would love that.
Sarah, you've got to make those cards again, remember? The 911 cards?
We'll make the cards.
Yes, please do. And, yeah, it's, you never know. I mean, I met somebody the other day who worked a couple jobs and they probably weren't right for 911. But, you know, you see some amazing people out there that are working. And, you know, I know some of them could, could help you.
And we would be happy to work with Sarah to facilitate an open house and let the temporary staff know that that's an opportunity.
Sarah, is, is there a way for you to kind of bring the open house to some of the, some of the call center, the COVID call center folks, kind of within the structure of their existing hours? I mean, so these people are plugged in virtually to, to, to this call center. I mean, if there was a need to, you know, kind of provide a base number of hours for them per week of, of work, but it was, we knew, you know, like right at this moment, it's pretty quiet, you know, at, at the call center, like, can you plan an hour and a half, like, presentation for them or, you know, kind of, you know, engage people where they are as opposed to saying like, hey, if you're interested in this, you know, come to this open house?
We could try to figure something out. Ideally, they would come here and we could have them come and do a sit along and that type of stuff so they can see what it's like in the building. I think that's a big piece of it, not really getting that bird's eye view of what's happening here, because I think that kind of piques a lot of people's interest when they come here and see it. But yeah, I mean, we can do one-on-ones, we can, you know, we can do whatever. If we have some people that are interested, we can work it out, whatever would work with them to get them here.
Great, thank you.
So you're asking really for us to come up with a dollar amount today?
Yes.
And you're actually saying the response team is 14 limited duration employees that are here for sure. And then you've got these temporary employees that, what's, what is, what are we using today for the 32,000?
The 32,000 is mostly for the temporary employees, is that correct?
Not all of it for temporary employees, yeah. And the skeleton body, the core group comprises the numbers you mentioned, Commissioner, limited durations. Five or six of them actually, for example, Alex Hinkle and others are in positions that are going to expire end of this year. So there is some anxiety around that and we're hoping to come by the end of the month with existing funds and see how we can extend a few of those core positions so that we have that body in place. And then topping that would be whatever your expectations are around service level, and we would have temporary positions that would fulfill that. So there are minimum, there is a minimum service level that we can meet if we had no temps, right? But obviously, that comes with trade-off. So there'd be longer wait time, there'll be less calls returned, there'll be less phones answered on time, there'll be less vaccination delivered. So it really depends. And so the quality of the service level goes up depending on how much capacity we have with our temporary positions.
Just to clarify, what the board approves is an up to amount. As, as been stated, the current up to amount is 55,000 per week, but that has been, the first week of March was 32,000 because of the department is adjusting based on the demand.
And, and, you know, one of the important things to note about that is that you, you currently have an up to 55,000 threshold and you're not using it. So, I mean, you know, you're, you're, you've, you've tapered down to a certain degree to, you know, below the, the 55,000. So if, if we give you broader discretion, it doesn't, you know, if we give you the discretion to do 55,000, doesn't mean you're going to do 55,000. It, you know, it, you know, we're basically, you know, trusting your judgment to, you know, maintain that, the balances of service, you know, level of service and, you know, efficient, efficient resource use and, you know, that the concern that I'm, that I keep putting out of, you know, being, being, being ready to respond to, to future surges as nee, as needed.
That's correct, because there's two variables that are happening. One is, is we're spending less so that the money goes further. And then also, with the FEMA reimbursements is occurring, so a certain percentage of, certain dollar amount is, is being reimbursed by FEMA, so that also extends the amount of time that funds.
And that's through June, correct?
Through end of June, correct, Commissioner. And believe me, none of us want to manage people who don't have work to do. That's a lot more work for us. So we're, we're not having people just sit around. That's, I, none of us want that responsibility. So I want to be clear on that. It, it's really a matter of meeting your expectations. And to some extent, would be easier for us, but of course, this shouldn't be driven on what's easier for us is if we were told you have only 10,000 to spend or 20,000, then we would adjust accordingly. But we're willing to go with whatever your expectations are, of course, and the service delivery and level you want to have for our community and adjust accordingly.
And really, the staff report has two options, but obviously, there's, there's multiple options. You know, we, we just tried to model the 55,000 versus the 30,000, but really could be anything in between. But we just try to clearly delineate different service levels based on those two.
So 30 or 30 to 55, one, three or whatever months also, right?
Yeah, those are the main decisions.
Yeah.
And that's, or less.
I like a three-month window here at some amount. You know, I'm, I'm going back between, you know, the 55 authorized, expected to be minimal, or 30, you know, maximum, expected to be managed, just like Nahad mentioned. But maybe a three-month window with some X amount. I'm just trying to get, come to closure. I'm just trying to get, come to closure here as we're talking.
It's always a good idea to come to closure, isn't it? Well, um, looking at the numbers, I, I would like to minimize what we're spending because, okay, if you're saying it's coming back, oh, we're going to need more money to be set aside for that. And I think, what is our country's debt now? 30, $30 trillion, um, you know, interest rates are going up. Um, yeah, I, I think we have to spend our money really frugally, wisely. And, um, you know, I would say if we're getting by with 32,000 and we had 20 cases yesterday and we have, what is it, you know, so many, um, you know, we're, we're at the better end of the, of the, the Omicron at the moment. So I think we should, um, recognize that and be frugal. And then if we need to ramp up, you can always come back to us. We do, we do listen.
So a three-month timeframe at some amount that we agree upon?
So what's, what's 30,000 times 12 then, right?
Uh, I, I, I would rather, I would rather give the ceiling amount, the higher, the higher level ceiling amount for a long period of time and give the lower level ceiling amount for a short period of time because we don't know what's going to happen.
Well, but we're talking about a fund that is on a line item in the ARPA funds that's not going anywhere else. So within a week, we could be meeting if there's authorization needed or there's going to be enough flexibility in the, in the health department to respond overnight to something, you know, within a day or two to respond to something that's catastrophic and we'll be talking about it in our next board meeting. So I, I think we have the flexibility, flexibility either way.
I think we do.
I mean, we have the flexibility to, to dial money up and down, but HR processes take a long time. And if you don't have certain kinds of predictability associated with dollars, uh, then we're basically, um, we, we are quite possibly wasting a whole bunch of staff time on HR processes on a month-to-month basis, making changes.
You're not talking about getting rid of any of the 14, uh, limited duration people, are you?
May I?
Yes, please.
So Commissioner, we're hoping by the end of the month or early April to come back and seek your approval for extension of five or six positions of the skeleton core positions because they're slated to end, end of December, right? Like Alex Hinkle type of people, these are people that we have hired in limited duration and they're slated to.
But, but if the board, if the board says 30,000 rather than 55,000 per week, it's that the limited duration positions aren't going away, it's the temp staff would be dialed down.
Yeah, we would start dialing that exactly. We would start, I, I think for us, what would be helpful, Eric, if you don't mind me saying, is really the service level expectation. So funding is a piece of that, but, um, are you, would the board consider or expect us to have seven-day-a-week, um, type of service delivery? 12 to 14-hour day call centers, multilingual wraparound services, because then that dictates how we manage.
Yeah, I mean, but the, I mean, the question at hand is, is if the board said $30,000 a week versus 55, we would reduce the temporary staff, not the limited duration FTEs.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, because yesterday in the, in the entire state, there were only 224 people in the entire state, which was 24 fewer than the prior day. And in ICU for the entire state was 34, I believe one is in, uh, St. Charles. So truly, we are, you know, we're at the lower end of what we're dealing with and we can only hope that we're going into summer and, you know, this is going to be something we're, you know, and if it's not, then it's not. And we, but, um, I just think, okay, maybe we have to think ahead and not touch that entire, that entire money. So there's something there when we need it, just to be more conservative with those funds. I really think it's important.
But, uh, again, I mean, the, the, the audit showed that, uh, the people we have managing the COVID response are dialing up and dialing down as appropriate, you know, when we give them the envelope to work within. So, uh, uh, again, just saying up to 55,000 doesn't mean they're going to spend 55,000 per week. Um, we, we're seeing right now that, uh, with, with discretion, um, the, the COVID response team is, is coming in at 32,000 per week. So I, I, you know, I don't see, um, I don't see a downside to, uh, leaving the management of pandemic response to the professionals who have been, uh, tracking the pandemic, thinking strategically about it and, and teeing up for us an adequate response, um, for two years.
I feel kind of wrapped up here. I mean, because this, we should just be doing good things for the people that are in need. So, I mean, I, we kind, I, yeah, I think we're stuck in the mud a little bit. I'm either, maybe bring it back after lunch even or something.
And one way to frame the discussion is, again, it's, it's oversimplifying it, but you look at those five service areas, the most concrete one to talk about is, is the hotline. The current hotline mirrors the state hours, includes Saturday and then callbacks on Sunday. So the next lower level of service is Monday through Friday, nine to five, no Saturday, just checking voicemails. And so that's just a clearly delineation of, of different service levels.
Why aren't the calls forwarded if the state actually is answering the phone?
Yeah, for any hours that the state's covering, forward automatically, please.
You mean the hours that the county hotline is not open? Yeah, that's certainly an option.
Yep.
But we want to make sure that there's a discussion with the board because if we, if we made that change, then all of a sudden somebody calls in and says, hey, how come your hotline's closed on Saturday? We want to make sure that that's a, that's discussed.
Well, we're saying, why isn't, why isn't the call forwarded? Like in today's world of technology, why couldn't that call be forwarded? Um, I know that, that's what happened with my husband's answering service. The calls were forwarded. If the first doctor didn't answer, they called another doctor.
It, it can. I mean, it's a different level of service. If somebody calls the state hotline and then sometimes the state, they get referred to the, to the local one. Um, I mean, they, we could, we could close down the hotline. I mean, we, we could not have one and just say, call the state. That's certainly an option. Or i- if we don't mirror the, the state hours, then when ours is closed, we could, we could forward it. Those are all options, you know, those are, are different service levels.
But we're talking, those are, those calls are answered by temporaries?
Yes.
Okay, that's where all the temporaries are working.
Not all, no, Commissioner. We have staff helping our vaccination services, staff helping wraparound services, staff helping, uh, temporary staff helping education. So we have, uh, in these five processes that Eric delineated, we have temporary staff. They're not just call center. I think you're using call center because it's more tangible, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And they are already getting forwarded, Commissioner. Maybe I wasn't clear, my apologies. If they're, if we're not, if we don't have ours or we don't have someone available to get forwarded already, people choose to directly call the local number rather than the state. And, and like Eric said, that whole thing can go away. We can shut down the call center and rely on the state should the board decide that. And that'll certainly bring the cost down.
So what is a call center costing a week then? What are we spending today? Um, this, what did we spend last week on the call center? Cheryl, can you pull that number out?
I'd have to get back to you on that, but it is feasible to look at.
Is it like three people or something that, um, work that system or is it more than that?
I would say higher proportion of our temporary staff are based on, is based in the call center at this point. We have a few doing our outreach services, the wraparound. We have a few doing vaccination. I think only one doing testing at this point. I think maybe one doing, uh, public education and vast majority are based in the call center.
Well, it's like 1760 a person at $44 an hour for one employee for 40 hours. So, and there are no benefits or anything on top of that, correct? So.
No bet, no benefits, correct.
Okay, all right. So that's like 1760, that's like $2,000 for one person for the call center for a week. All right. So, okay, so Commissioner Chang, you want to do the 55,000 max? And, um, Commissioner DeBon, where are you at?
Well, if we're talking about the number, I already said, let's, uh, you know, kind of give a, a three, three-month window and I would be happy with, you know, some 30, $35,000 number, knowing that that's the, uh, the number that we're aiming for right now and we can be flexible if anything.
35K a week for three months. Okay.
I mean, that's pretty tangible.
Right, and then we can, I mean, okay, so what if something terrible comes in? We'll step it up again. Commissioner Chang, can you, can you second that or not?
Are we, are we actually trying to make a motion?
Right, like if they know they have up to 35,000, if the employee that's answering the phone is costing us the county 2,000 a week at seven, at $44 an hour, um, then I think that the call center can be paid for in, in, uh, 35,000 a week, plus the other services that we're offering, especially if FEMA is still picking up the vaccination, which will be for, uh, what, half of March, April, May and June? So three and a half more months, that'll cover through that for vaccinations with FEMA funding. Is that going to come after the fact, Cheryl, or does that come be, do we get that right along?
It comes after the fact, but we'll put it on the books that we'll receive that revenue, so we're not being.
All right, so we get three and a half months more of FEMA.
Is that helpful? I mean, because we could, we could slice and dust this all kinds of ways. I'm trying to come to some kind of.
Yeah, I mean, one, we're, we're happy to adjust, you know, if the board approves 30, up to 35,000 a week for, for three months, um, we certainly will make that adjustment. Is the expectation of the board that the hotline hours remain as is or that decreased amount? And really, we could do either one. If we, if we continue the existing hours, then the money may run out sooner because we, you know, we may be spending a little bit more than 35 per week. But is the expectation for the board, the hotline hours remain as is and mirror the state one or, or reduced a little bit to reflect the 35 a week?
I support reducing, uh, you know, and, you know, maybe it's a four-hour hotline with callbacks because if, you know, somebody's going to man it and it's not going to be a full-time four-hour window, you call back a list of, you know, or two windows a day saying it's available, but you're going, sometimes you're going to get a callback.
Yeah, I mean, we'll adjust accordingly. Most of the calls come between eight and two.
Yeah.
That's the new, you said, right?
That makes sense. And what about the other? I just want to be clear on the other functions too because I'm, I'm going to have people waiting for me to respond to them.
More clarity.
Going to be reducing its capacity.
Yes, I mean.
If you're spending 32,000 last week, then surely 35,000 is going to cover you this week, I would think. And, you know.
But is it the right amount, is it the right amount to authorize for three months?
I think it is and then we, if we need to up it, we will, but we're getting FEMA money too, so don't forget the FEMA money. How much, how much would that be, Cheryl?
Last week, we had 6,000 charged FEMA.
FEMA, 6,000? Okay, so then we're talking about spending, um, 35 and six, you said 6,000? So we're over 41.
It, it was roughly, uh, 36,000. We charged 30,000 to ARPA and 6,000 to FEMA.
Okay.
So I think Nahad, you mentioned vaccine clinic guidance or, or expectation of level?
Eric, go ahead. I mean, the way I look at it is, is those five area, those five service areas that, that were discussed, um, you know, the 55,000 is a certain level. And then at 35,000, you know, everything is reduced a little bit. Maybe it's 80% of what we're doing. I mean, that's just a, a ballpark, more of a conceptual. Um, so the, the total service in those five areas, you know, if, if 100% is, is current at $55,000 a week, at 35,000, we might be at 75 or 80% in all those areas.
So I'm just thinking for testing and vaccination, uh, if there's been a vaccination clinic and I, 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 I'll bring up the Lapine, uh, you know, clinic at the library, that's where I got my booster shot. I was in line, I was talking to people, I kind of had a feel for who was there. I don't know who's there today though, you know, so this was weeks ago that I was there. I mean, if we can have a, uh, you know, a two-person navigator crew there explaining Oregon Health Plan, St. Charles Clinic, Lapine Clinic and, uh, any other supports, maybe that's where we, you know, we don't even bring vaccines there, but it's a navigation center for anybody that wants to show up. That could surely help dial that down. As I say, I don't know, maybe there is 30 people that show up every week right now. I don't know what the numbers are, but that's kind of a vision I have for switching gears here. Yes, we're going to show up to that same location that we've been advertising for months now, uh, but we're totally switching gears. You know, here's your pamphlet, here's a little personal, uh, support and here's what the community clinic and St. Charles Clinic and Lapine are doing, uh, and here's what Oregon Health Plan is offering.
And, and, yeah, and I would kind of put it to the COVID response team to say, okay, if you have 35,000, what makes the most sense? In fact, when Nahad and I first had a discussion about how to frame this discussion, you know, at some point he said, it might be helpful just to give us a bucket of money and, and we will deploy the money, but, you know, based on, on, on our background and, and knowledge. Um, so we will, you know, the COVID response team will make those changes as appropriate.
FEMA is paying for vaccinations. So is there a limit to how much they will pay? Is there a limit?
Uh, not really. We, it, we're mostly limited, we have a not to exceed agreement, but we can request for that to increase should it be needed.
Okay, all right. So really, I don't even know if we need to talk about vaccinations then. So it's the other parts of the four items that you're talking about evaluating with the 35,000?
Yeah, yeah, and we're not asking the board to make service level decisions on all those areas. It just kind of helps get a general sense of, okay, well, we will dial back the, the hotline hours and other areas.
Well, I, um, the outbreak response for high consequence settings, I, I certainly wouldn't want that to be dialed back.
Yeah, and within the.
I mean, maybe, maybe there's not that much coming in, you know, demand for that service, but, you know, that, that's a, that's a service that we want to ensure is, uh, you know, is 100% available because, you know, long-term care facilities, I mean, that, you know, we, we saw how many of the deaths, um, from COVID, you know, came through.
And if the board gives us permission within the ceiling that you're offering and we're not saying we're going to reach that ceiling, like I said, we're not going to have people under us who don't have work to do. That's a lot of management. So, but within that ceiling, we can pull the levers as needed and adjust accordingly. So if we need to dial back on call center, but dial back up on business liaison and business consultancies or con, uh, consequential concrete settings, like long-term care facilities, for example, if we have that flexibility within that ceiling to adjust the service level, then we can proceed with that.
Well, I support that flexibility. Uh, what a great opportunity to get to these high consequence settings, is that kind of the group we're talking about. But just education, knowledge, uh, you know, recovery, what we've been through, checking on their staff and protocols, procedures, uh, and then, you know, outbreak response specifically if there's action. So I'm thinking, because this could be a quiet period too. We'll see if, you know, if there's no spike in the, in the near future, this is truly that kind of response recovery period too.
Well, we all remember back to when, um, COVID first hit America in Kirkland, Washington and all those people were passing away and so worried. And we kept asking for testing, asking for testing for the, you know, following what they did in Sweden where the vulnerable were truly protected. So, um, you know, thank you for what we did. I know we lost some people, but then again, the other side of the story is what I say about my own mother. She had COVID last July. She's in hospice and her death is still going to be counted as COVID. And I honestly, that, that seems to be not right. So that's, that's a government decision and, um, anyway, yeah. It's been, you know, it's been months and I don't believe anybody actually in her, in her home, um, passed away from COVID. So that was, that was really good news. But they're dying and they had COVID, so then they're counted.
Sorry to hear about you, Commissioner.
Oh, you know, it's, this has been so horrible for the older people in our country. They've been locked away, they've been eating their meals alone. It's been two years practically. Well, it has been two years. And, um, this is not the way anybody would want to spend the end of their life where you're, um, you know, you lose. end of their life, where you're, you know, you lose all your socialization, it's, it's been horrible, and I, anybody that's had to have someone that has passed away alone, I just, yeah, just, it's not been a pretty picture, so. Thank you, Nahad, I think you, I think you'll do a great job, and we've got the FEMA money still coming in till the end of June, so that's.
I would suggest a board motion, just so that we have clear direction.
Okay, motion, please.
So, three-month period at a maximum of thirty-five thousand dollars per week with the items as discussed, I mean, because there was a lot of.
That's clear direction, thank you.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? And on the record, please make note that we do have FEMA funding coming till the end of June, another three and a half months, so, which, according to Cheryl, can be raised, the billing there. So Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the Chair of Justice?
And I'll just say again, my preference would be to provide a broader envelope for our professional public health staff to function and operate with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Commissioners, we just have the one item that we skipped over, and I see Tom Coon is available?
Oh, Tom.
If we can just cover that one last item.
Item number twelve. Tom, you weren't even number thirteen.
Lucky number twelve.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm Tom Coon from Deschutes County Health Services Public Health, and I am here today because in our sixth amendment to the Oregon Health Authority Intergovernmental Agreement, we finally are receiving the balance due to us for our Public Health Modernization Regional Funding, or Program Element 5102, it's in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred, bringing our total for this year, fiscal year, to three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. This was a funding that, you know, I discussed with you all in the past, and you approved our application for this, and we were awarded this regional funding in early January, and we finally see it showing up in amendments recently. So here it is in the amendments, and this is what was expected that we would receive for this current fiscal year. Please let me know if you have any questions.
I did circle, it said Sixth Amendment, so, yes. Any questions from the board?
So this is the amount that has been discussed in the past, and you're just saying this is the paperwork to follow up, correct?
Correct, it's every amendment, a different program area, gets a little tweak to their funding, we might get up to ten to fifteen amendments in a fiscal year sometimes, so just a very routine fiscal adjustment.
Great.
I'm good to move forward with this, but Tom, can you, could you just speak for a minute or two about what happens within the Regional Partnership Implementation Program Element?
Sure, basically, we've had several positions that have been existing for several years through the Regional Partnership, we have a regional epidemiologist, a regional nurse that goes into long-term care, no, long-term care facilities throughout the region, and we are currently recruiting for a nurse to complement that work, that would go into congregate settings. We've been a little, having some difficulties with recruitment, and that's pretty much an agency-wide issue, trying to recruit another public health nurse for this work, and so we are working through that at the moment. We did just secure a position to do our environmental hazards work, that's going to look at some of the emerging conditions that we didn't have capacity to address, you know, wildfire smoke, excessive heat, drought, vector-borne disease, so fortunately, we have filled that position recently and are beginning work on that. We meet regularly with our regional partners in Crook and Jefferson Counties, and, yeah, things are up and running, other than having a little trouble recruiting for some of the new positions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of air signature of document 2022-251, OHA Agreement Number 169509-6, for the Regional Partnership Implementation Element.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the Chair of Justice? Thank you, Tom. Tom, it was really too bad, you were just a few minutes late, and then you got to.
Stand by for forty-five minutes.
Yes, sorry.
No problem, thank you very much.
You haven't found your public health nurse yet, or have you?
No, we haven't, it's just kind of a system-wide issue with recruitment, that's why there's been so many workforce development bills and efforts coming forward, and other efforts by, like, Central Oregon Community College, to really try to get the workforce available here in Deschutes County.
Truly, I know, we did help funding with some public health training, so, okay, all right, well, we need a public health nurse, it's been mentioned, so hopefully, maybe that'll help, and you can find those people. So thank you, Tom, thank you for being there, truly thank you for being there, and we'd love to see you in person.
Yes, I will do that in the future.
Okay, thank you, all righty. So, okay, so now we have a lunch recess, should we come back then at, what, one fifteen? Would that be okay? Okay, let's come back at one fifteen then.[993.91]
Boarding in progress.
Thank you. We'll reconvene our afternoon meeting, um, March 16th, 2022, and I believe we're up to item number 14. Eric.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Erica Crop, Deputy County Administrator. I changed my blazer this morning. I was wearing my interim Health Services Director blazer for the morning presentation, and now I'm, I'm here as Deputy County Administrator, so I changed blazers for you.
That's, thank you, Eric.
A man of many identities.
There you go.
For the responsibilities.
Yes. We're here this afternoon to talk about CPACE. It's one of those acronyms that I always have to look to see what it stands for. Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. To begin with, I would encourage the board to talk about whether or not the board will invite people to speak on this item. This is not a public hearing, um, so it's really up to the board or the Chair, Chair's discretion about whether or not, uh, people are allowed to speak on this item. I know there are many people in the room and also maybe some online that would like to speak, um, but I thought it'd be helpful to have that conversation. And just for, for the audience information, if the board directs staff to move forward on CPACE, likely the next step would be to draft an ordinance. That ordinance would come back in a public hearing, so there's that piece of it. But with that, I would invite the board to, um, discuss whether or not they want to hear from folks today.
Well, because folks are here, and I haven't talked to Paula for maybe a couple days. It would, no, it actually would be lovely to hear from everyone that wants to speak, um, three minutes maximum, but no, truly. And then we will, we will, if we have an ordinance, have them come back for that public hearing. So I'm sure there are a couple of people that would like to talk to us now.
Great. All right. I'll continue with the staff presentation and then turn it over to the board after the presentation. So today's update is covering the topics listed on the slideshow. Um, some of it is, is coming back to the board. The board had questions the last time it was discussed, which was in December. Uh, the board was curious about Benton County and City of Corvallis efforts. Uh, there was also direction to talk to, um, Michael Yaki and look at some model Oregon PACE local program documents. We also got some input from our county assessor, Scott Langton. Uh, Commissioner Chang asked about local interest in CPACE and the timing of those projects, so I'll cover that today. Commissioner DeBonne asked about CPACE financing versus traditional bank loan financing, so we'll, we'll cover that. Um, and then we'll talk about some options and then seek board direction. So that's kind of the outline for today.
Great. Thank you.
Based on the board discussion, County Council Dave Doyle reached out to Benton County and the City of Corvallis. There's a memo in the packet from Dave Doyle, but essentially the Benton County and City of Corvallis are not currently adopting or pursuing CPACE, uh, the CPACE program. Instead, those jurisdictions talked about kind of waiting, a wait, wait-and-see approach about a possible statewide program. So that's one piece of follow-up from the last meeting. Also in your packet is a memo from County Council Dave Doyle. He was in contact with Michael Yaki, who is the Senior Vice President and Senior Counsel for Petros Pace Finance out of, I think it's out of Texas.
Sounds like it.
Yes. Um, Michael is part of a, kind of a consortium that has put together model documents for CPACE. Those were provided to County Council Dave Doyle, and really what, what the, the model ordinance has is, is more of a checkbox application approach, so that county staff would not be doing a lot of the heavy lifting. Um, the model ordinance has, you know, requires the applicant to submit engineered drawings, you know, has an engineer stamp in terms of the energy savings, um, and then county staff would be more looking for that, um, engineered stamp and not necessarily look, or would not be looking at the calculations. So the, the model ordinance is more of a checklist and also puts more of the risk on the owner and the capital provider, not the county. Also in the packet is a memo from County Assessor Scott Langton. Um, Scott was not available today, but his memo basically says, uh, in terms of the workload on the assessor's office, if the assessor's office was simply to post collect, a collectible lien on defaults, he anticipates that that would be minimal impact on, on his office and his staff's time. Um, but if the program was designed differently, and if there was, if the property, property tax statement was, was used as a primary collection of the annual loan amount, then he would want a little bit more time to look at the impact on, on his staff. And I'm, I believe the, the model ordinance would have more of a, the first impact on Scott's office. Next, Commissioner, as I mentioned, Commissioner James asked about local interest in CPACE. The staff report has, uh, a lot of detail. I reached out to Paula at three fifty to shoots, and she put me in contact with folks. There was also input from interested parties throughout this process. Some emailed the Commissioners directly. Um, so here's just a very quick overview of, of that input. Uh, Perry Brooks talked about a thirty-six unit apartment complex on Fourth and Only here in Bend. Uh, they're hoping, he's hoping to start the construction at the end of twenty twenty-two or early twenty twenty-three, and sees a CPACE, CPACE potential for that project. He's also looking at a multi-use building where there would be commercial on the first floor and apartments on the, on the second floor. The location of that is Colorado Avenue, just east of Bond Street. The goal is to start construction this late summer or early fall. Tom Kelly from the Neil Kelly Company would like to do a new roof, new roof and solar panels on their Bend office within the next two years or in two years. A Todd Gray with Merite Hotels recently opened the Element Hotel and the Holiday Inn Express and would have liked to use CPACE for those projects and indicated overall support. A Tyler Neese with the Central Oregon Association of Realtors, he reached out to his members, and the feedback got, he got was, overall, the brokers that are part of Core were supportive, and the types of projects they would be interested in include solar, LED lighting, energy efficiency, HVAC systems, electric char, electric car charging stations, and projects related to multifamily projects. The timeline from, their members varied from the next six months to, uh, two years. And then...
Where's Dirk's? Dirk?
And then Dirk, right here.
Oh, good.
Right here, good timing, Commissioner. Chair of there.
He is, yes.
Yes.
Talk to us all.
Not included in the staff report, but, um, not to be missed is, uh...
Never to be missed.
Dirk Van Howling. He emailed the board on February eighteenth to the Citizen Input email box, and Dirk wrote that he's a retired general contractor and developer working in Deschutes County for the last forty-two years. Uh, he currently owns a daycare facility ripe for solar panels. Uh, he cannot afford going forward with the conventional financing, but would go forward if CPACE was adopted by the county.
I also recognize him for donating the property for the Habitat for Humanity in Bend. Um, to me, that, that meant so much, and to actually meet somebody that did that. Uh, anyway, I thank him for that.
Uh, so his email indicates overall support and then also talks about that specific project.
Erica, um, sorry, I didn't get these to you in time for the, the staff packet, but, uh, I also have emails from, uh, Boomer Fleming from Killian Pacific. Uh, they're the group that's working on a three hundred eleven unit multifamily mixed-use project over in the, in the area of the Box Factory, um, and indicating that they would like to use CPACE financing to, for a number of energy efficiency, um, upgrades or improvements that they'd like to do with that, uh, project. Uh, and I've also had, um, a couple of verbal discussions with Ledge Capital, who's a group that is working on affordable housing projects in, in the Redmond area, um, that they would be interested. They, if we had, um, moved forward with CPACE a year ago, then they, they could have used it for, uh, one of their current projects, and they would be interested in using CPACE for a future project that they're working on.
All right. Thank you. Then going to Commissioner DeBonne's question a few weeks ago, the traditional bank loan versus CPACE financing, the staff report has an example or a hypothetical, and it walks through. But just to summarize that, with a traditional bank loan, uh, there's usually a required down payment. There's a shorter loan term, less net cash flow, and the security is, is a trustee. With CPACE financing, there's no down payment. There's a longer loan term that results in a higher net, net cash flow, and the, and the loan is secured by the, by the county lien.
So following up on that, the, the memo from legal on that, talking to, uh, Mr. Yaki, uh, talks about, on the bottom of the front, oh, yeah, bottom of the page, it says, since lender consent is required, the likelihood that the lender will step in to cure is high and avoid foreclosure. But, so that statement, since lender consent is required, was the, that's what I was looking for, and as I say, maybe it's always been there, but I finally got it. The fact that the bank does, does understand upfront what's going on, because that was, you know, one of those situations where like, well, I'm getting some money from here, and I'm getting some money from there, and they both need to understand what, what's happening.
Yes, yes. And in fact, because of, of, there's more security on the loan allows for that type of, of the CPACE financing in the longer term. I don't know, Dave, if you have any comments?
I thought the last comment that Mr. Yaki provided, that nationwide, there were, you know, over fifteen hundred of these types of arrangements, and there's only been one default and no foreclosures. So I, obviously, the lenders, uh, step in when they need to to make sure that that doesn't happen, and they protect their, their investment.
And I was, I was also thinking into the, into, and I'm not a developer, so I was just trying to understand the space, but, you know, is a bank gonna like this idea or be put off by it? So that was just, as I say, kind of trying to think into something I'm not an expert in, but that's why I was a little hesitant.
Yeah, and really, really early in the process of exploring this, you know, and then in the spring last year, we heard from, I believe it was Vice President from First Interstate Bank and a couple of other, like, major financial institutions, that they were really excited to offer this product, this, this, this financing product in this market.
Yeah, well, as I say, so then I asked some very specific people, like at Chamber Events or Edco Events, and they're like, I don't know what that is. Doesn't sound like it'd be something that I'd like to do. So, I mean, there wasn't knowledge in the industry, and I'm not, you know, not judging there, but that was my experience. You know, you're saying people are excited, and I talked to people in person, and they're like, I don't know what this is. So it's just not, not knowledgeable.
I, I don't think it's necessary for every financial institution to understand what this is and want to do it. I just think it's necessary for a couple, um, to cover the, to cover the demand for...
My information was personal communication, and there wasn't knowledge about it. That's all I'm saying.
Well, as someone who has her son that works in clean energy, um, it's kind of appropriate, and it does look like we have so many people that are interested in this program here in Deschutes County. It, um, you know, it's good. So, thank you, Eric.
The next slide, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but just options for the board. Well, we could probably come back to that after others have, have an opportunity for input. And the options, the staff report has pros and cons, and those are very high level. I know that, that there are additional pros, pros that were, were provided, and I'm sure that people speaking today can elaborate on those, but they were just very, some very high-level pros and cons. Uh, and then if the board wants to move forward with CPACE, as I mentioned, the next, the next step would be to direct staff to bring back a draft ordinance. Um, we also would need to talk to, or at least come back to the board and talk about how to staff this program. Uh, when we've talked to other agencies, other cities and counties, they have told us that it takes about a, a half, a point five FTE to get the program going and to operate and manage it. Uh, I know Clark County, they didn't add FTE, FTE at the time, but in talking to Clark County, they said they had staff capacity, and they also said that it takes about a halftime position. So if the board did want to move forward, we would need to come back and work with the board on, on identifying, uh, where to get that, or how to add that capacity. Um, I've talked to Peter Gutowski, and, and I know, as, as you know, if, as you've talked to him about staffing issues, you know, CDD does not currently have staff capacity to, to, uh, start this program and operate it. And also in talking to Nick Lealak, we don't have that in administration either. Um, so that'll just need to be a, a consideration.
Eric, if I can just also offer, it's, even if it were point one FTE, frankly, I don't have anybody else that can change blazers or other retirees, you mentioned at the start, that can add, that has capacity. We just, we don't have that. So I want that to be very clear, is if, if we do move forward, we're going to just need to think about implementation timeline until such time that we can add it.
Yeah, it would likely either be an additive, uh, FTE or partial FTE, or we'd have to contract it out. So that concludes the staff report.
Okay, so, um, if we have some people in the room then that want to speak, do they need to fill out the blue reports, or can they just identify themselves?
It's helpful if they, if they fill out the reports, but they can, but if you want to go ahead and start, they can...
Right, if you want to go ahead and start, and then just...
Exactly.
And then, um, you can fill out the blue report when you're done.
Yeah.
But...
Yes.
Yes. Who would like to be first?
All right, well done. Dirk Van Howling. How's everybody doing?
Great.
Hi Patty.
Hello.
Phil. Thanks for having me here today. Appreciate the time. Um, my letter more or less build out my interest in that I have a building that I can put enough panels on that I can create like thirty-seven thousand watts a day, and it's a, it, I can't afford to do that without somebody helping me with a down payment. And then after the down payment and a conventional loan, I probably might get five years, but this system is so much more friendly. Um, no down payment, maybe an origination fee of some sort to help the county process, but other than that, when you can get a lender that'll help you structure the loan to meet your cash flow needs, you got a good lender. There aren't very many of those in town that would do that. And like I said, I think conventional loan, I might be able to get a five-year loan, but I'm just not going to put that kind of money into something upfront, even though I know in the long run it's going to pay for itself. Um, with a big down payment and, you know, kind of worrying about in five years, can I get this thing paid off? So for a little project like mine, and I'm not sure how much it's going to cost yet, but I know it's more than what I could probably afford out of my pocket, it would be a real boon. And I think for all commercial buildings in town, if commercial building owners knew about this program, and like you were saying, when you went to the bank, a lot of them don't even, the banks don't know about it, so obviously a lot of businesses don't know about it. And if they did know about it, I think there'd be quite a bit of, uh, additional business activity due to the fact that people can get money for as little as this looks like we can get the money. So the structure could be up for twenty years on these loans, from what I understand. Also, um, the loan is transferable, and that's something you don't get with a five-year, or, you know, a five-year loan, you're not going to get, the bank's not going to say, yeah, we'll pass it on to the next buyer. That's not going to happen. But in this case, it does. And that could be a big deal for someone wanting to sell a building somewhere in that time period where they're still trying to pay off their system. So there's, there's multiple pluses here, and, um, I don't think the county should wait for the state to do anything, because if we do that, we're going to be looking at years down the road, my guess is. And yet we have a county that could, when it comes to solar, we could really kick butt as far as putting panels up if we had a program that allowed people to purchase those panels for no down payment, structure the, the terms so that it fits their cash flow. And, um, it's a win for the county, it's a win for the state, it's a win for the world. The more renewables we get up there, the faster we get them up there, the less some of these other issues are going to create problems for us. So I think it's a wise move. Um, I probably burnt my three minutes, but, um, that's basically what I had to say, and I appreciate you guys considering it, and I think it's a very worthwhile program. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Get the, um, blue sheet. And, um, the next person that testifies, if you can give your name and your, um, address, so we have, I mean, it'll be on the blue sheet too, but just for the record, please.
Sure. Perry Brooks, one nine four eight zero, Wes Campbell in Bend. Um, thanks again for taking the time to review this process. Super exciting. Again, I'm a partner in Roost Development. Uh, we, we design and build, um, multifamily projects here in Bend. A lot of infill, like the Fourth and Only is kind of an infill project, and, um, and we really pride ourselves in being, uh, sustainable, trying to build net zero as much as we possibly can. Um, CPACE offers, uh, it's a great program. It offers low-interest loans to help companies like ourselves who are, you know, small enough where we don't have the, the capital just to, you know, throw at projects that allows us to really finance this in a creative way and be able to reach our sustainability goals. Um, I was, uh, prior to moving to Bend, I was in Colorado, and I participated in a PACE program, um, there. As here, there was some skepticism about it, um, not really knowing what it was, but it became a gigantic boon for the entire city. Uh, they, they did it a little bit differently. They took out a bond, a three hundred and fifty million dollar bond. That bond... and they took out a bond, a three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond. That bond was accounted for within three weeks. So, once kind of the firestorm got going, it got very popular, and people did a lot of work with it. It helped the city maintain their, or get to their sustainability goals and their climate action plan. We, as I mentioned, we have the apartment building on Fourth, we also have a small commercial in Colorado, and we are looking at four or five other projects in the next two years. That would be, CPACE would be very applicable to it, and it would be a great benefit for us. You know, it would help us be able to do the sustainability methods that we need to do and not, you know, not have to skimp on doing certain things because we can't afford it.
So, a couple of questions, two questions. So, you just, you finished up with the sustainability goal. So, if you're building something new, what are those cost-added items that would be funded by CPACE opposed to traditional? And I understand there's investment capital loan, and CPACE would be the other part, but what's that CPACE part that wouldn't be traditionally funded, or, you know, what are we gaining for that?
A lot of it is, you know, we're trying to build a better building, so we're not doing traditional framing, we're doing panelized systems, so there's a cost increase in that. We're doing, you know, ERVs, and we're doing mini-split for heating and cooling, and those are a little more expensive, so we're just trying to get that threshold down with the CPACE financing and solar as well.
Who makes the choice about those items that get funded by CPACE?
I believe CPACE, if I recall, I participated in the CPACE program, we would get bids for the various items, and then we'd go to the CPACE financing, and they would tell us what they could finance, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it would be worked out between the private, individual, seeking the loan, and the lender.
And part of, Commissioner, part of it is how the program is developed and designed, so that the ordinance would spell out what types of projects are eligible.
And then, you mentioned low cost of money or low interest, but it looks like it's a step above a market rate, and it's the long term, so then, the time value of money is, you know, you spend a hundred thousand dollars for something, it's going to be a slightly more interest rate, and it's going to be twenty years, so that's going to be generally more costly in the long run, which there's a willing, two partners in that transaction, so I'm not saying it isn't going to happen, but that's what I'm seeing when you think of money and the time of money, too.
But that's also the way that clean energy projects work. You, there's a whole bunch of upfront costs, and then there's incremental payback every year, and it takes a long term for that payback to catch up with that first cost.
So, then, yeah, as I say, you know, just that twenty years is a long interest run, and it's going to compound out there, and it's, that's the, both parties are going to want to buy into that.
Yeah, agreed. But the cost savings of the energy that you're receiving offsets that additional cost as well.
Yep, yeah, just acknowledging and learning about it.
Yeah, yeah. On the, one last thing, where I came from in Colorado, they also had a personnel issue in trying to, you know, administer this, and they chose a third party, and from what I, I happened to work for the city at the time as well, so I was pretty privy to a lot of the nuances of the program, and that turned out to be a very successful endeavor on their part.
So, if we had nuclear plants come online and drop all the cost of electricity by half for the rest of time, these things will not look as good in the long term.
Unless they're heating upgrades, HVAC upgrades, which are, you know, are not necessarily using electricity. I mean, there's...
I'm just thinking, these are the moving parts in here, that's all I'm thinking.
I mean...
I mean, it would be great if electricity dropped, but we see a five-to-seven percent increase every year regardless, and it have been for a number of years.
At our Edco Board meeting a couple days ago or last week, Pacific Power was explaining to us the six percent rate increase that they were requesting for this year. So, doesn't mean they're going to get it, but, you know, rather than, you know, rather than speculating about energy costs going down, I think the real signals that we're getting right now are going in the other direction.
So, Perry, in your experience then, you were saying that it really was advantageous for the city to hire a third party?
Yes.
And run it?
Yes.
And that worked out much?
And they would, that third party would collect a, I believe it's a one percent of the loan to go towards the administrative cost. Don't quote me on that, but I know it paid for itself.
We'll quote you, that's not...
No, 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 no. It paid for itself in the long run.
Okay, that makes sense. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for...
Yeah, thank you.
Do the blue form, please? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that wanted to speak? Okay, guess whose turn it is?
Hello, Commissioners, Chair Adair. Appreciate the time to speak today and for you opening this up. I'm Paula Latassa with 350 Deschutes. I live at six-five-one-eight-zero-seventy-sixth Street, Van Doregan, nine-seven-seven-oh-three. Been here for thirty years, and it's really quite an honor to represent this program and to present it to you on behalf of 350 Deschutes, but more importantly, the stakeholders that would like to use this program. And we're well aware that you've heard from over sixty different stakeholders that either support this program, but primarily, over a third of those are developers or Central Oregon Association of Realtors, folks that would use this program, want this program, and know that it can be effective in addressing the hurdles that developers and property owners face when they want to invest in clean energy project to reduce energy burden for themselves or their tenants, as well as reduce the cost operations. And that's where you see the differential, Commissioner DeBonne, in why this program is advantageous to building owners, because it's, even though you're looking at that long-term loan, that one percent, which is typically about the difference between a conventional and a traditional loan, what that, your, any conventional loan rarely covers one-hundred percent of your costs. And so, if a developer is looking to do a project, they're typically going to have to have different pools of money to fill that capital stack. And so, they're going to get maybe sixty to seventy percent from their conventional loan, but they have to figure out where the rest of that thirty to forty percent is going to come from, aside from their personal equity. And oftentimes, in the case of many developers, that will come from the private market. That private market money tends to be anywhere from ten, and I'm hearing rates of twenty percent. So, yeah, of course, you can't compare it to the loan rate of your conventional loan that's the base of your capital stack, but you have to be looking at what's the gap that this money is filling. And that's why it's been so wildly popular and successful, as it's popcorned up across the country. And we recognize that there have been programs that have not been as successful, and a lot of that is because they were developed early on. What we've now seen is that as the program is being developed, it's becoming more streamlined and more efficient, and so, as Eric appropriately addressed, this check-the-box program has become so efficient and so streamlined that King County, that recently implemented their program, had their first application. It took a staff member less than six hours to complete that project. So, we understand that there's time and investment by the county, but it is more than compensated for by the loan fees, and it's really not the burden that it has been in the past because of that streamline and that efficiency and transferring that burden over to the private lender and the property owner. It really, really reduces the need. Most programs that are operating within this check-the-box program do not see right up front the need for a point-five FTE person. Certainly, we do recognize and we do empathize with the county for staffing shortages, but as folks, we also are dealing with that. Everybody in the county is dealing with that. That is a pandemic problem, and ignoring this problem and the need based on a current shortage is really short-sighted. We need to be looking at getting this program in place and getting it available for developers and property owners so it can be used now, and we know that the resources can come along. And who knows, if you start adding that little addition to your job requests where people, you know, have the opportunity to work on renewable energy and energy efficiency and a brighter future, you might actually attract some really cool applicants. You never know, so...
Recruiting tool.
Yes.
Paula, we need, we need more recruiting tools.
Don't we all?
I keep saying pet insurance, but oh, well.
And I know there's a lot of other points that I would like to hit on. I recognize that we're out of time.
Well, you'll get to come back when we have our public hearing.
Okay.
Yes, you'll definitely get to come back, but so appreciate hearing from you today, and, you know, the widespread request from the community is, we acknowledge that and how important it is, so...
And we do know that there would be other people here. I'm not going to go into what has happened, but we have had a tragic event with one of our stakeholders who would have been here to testify, so...
Oh, gosh.
So, thank you.
Sorry to hear that.
Yes.
And do please fill out a blue page.
I'm on it, Patty.
Thank you. I know, I'm just like, I don't want Sharon, when I go upstairs, Sharon will, will like go, "Patty, wear the blue sheets." Now, thank you so much, and Eric, do you, do you need to hear some more direction from us then?
Yes, I can go back to the slides and kind of the options.
Before we dig into those options, I just wanted us to unpack a little bit what we're talking about in terms of staff, staff hour demands and costs to get this up and running. As I, as I understand it, there's at least three parts. There's an ordinance that needs to be written and passed, and that, a lot of the work there would fall with legal, but we have a pretty good model that we're working from.
We do have a model that we work from, so the time there is negligible.
Right. There's work within Greg's shop to, you know, create the, you know, administrative structure for this program, and then there's processing of applications as they come in. Is that, I mean, does that capture it? Does that capture the work?
For the most part. I mean, part of starting up a program is developing tools to outreach and to let people know about the program. So, that's another piece of it as well.
Outreach as well, okay. Yeah, because it does seem like, for the first two pieces, the ordinance and then kind of the administrative structure in, within the, within finance, you know, those are sort of sunk costs. We have to do those things before people can start to pursue CPACE projects and submit applications. The third piece, though, processing applications, if we, if we essentially, if we were able to, you know, if we didn't, if we didn't trust that the demand was going to be there to invest in staffing, if we were to set that up on a contract basis, you know, like almost piecework contract basis, you know, "You've got the qualifications to review these applications for us. As they come in, we will hand them to you. We will pay you per unit or per hour this much," then we could essentially wait until the applications were coming in with whatever fee they paid to review them, and we wouldn't have to forward, you know, that investment to get this program up and running. Is that, I mean, is, that's how I'm thinking about at least the application processing end of things. Is there, I mean, is that...
Another piece of that is, you know, the most efficient systems is you start electronically and you keep it electronically versus having a piece of paper. So, we would need to, if we go that method, figure out between our MUNIS system, between other finance systems, between CDDs, I forget the system that runs the permits and...
Acela.
Acela. I mean, we would need to look at how to, how to integrate the application process through, in the county system, rather than, "Oh, you want to, you want to apply for a CPACE project? Here's a paper application."
Or, I mean, it could conceivably be electronic, but it would be in a, in a system outside of our systems that we would need to integrate.
Yeah, I think it would want to be within a county system, and then if we had somebody else review it, yes, we could, I don't know, electronically, I mean, IT-wise, I don't know how we would do that, but the data and all the information, I think we'd want to keep in county systems. So, there would need to be some work with IT and the current county software.
And as we're talking about, you know, this third piece of the work, the application processing, when, you know, the option of essentially just kind of setting up the structure and then laying the cities do it, I mean, does that basically make that third piece of the work, the application processing, that that's their problem, like that, you know, that's their, that's their job, and, you know, at the, after we've set it up, we just, we just let demand and the cities kind of work it out, how it would, how it would, you know, how that staffing need would be met?
Yeah, that's one option, and then the county work would be more of the property, the property lien. I don't know if Greg has anything to add on any of this?
I mean, Greg, and Greg, can you talk a little bit about like what it would take to, I mean, is it, is the work in finance on every single application to set up a property lien, or is there just kind of some basic structural things that you need to do to enable this program?
Yeah, that's a good question. Greg, mine, county finance. So, I don't have a specific answer, but I can tell you what I've gleaned from conversations with different counties, and it's, as Eric was saying, the commitment is about a half of an FTE in terms of all of that that needs to be managed. The function needs to sit somewhere, it needs to be owned by somebody. There's going to be times, probably after startup, it's going to be less of an FTE that's required, and there's probably going to be times where it's more, but generally, a half of an FTE. Clark County, the person there I talked to said they had accumulated enough fees to start funding a full-time position after many, many applications had come through. It was a big, it was a big startup for them. But they said they had excess capacity, so they didn't need to add staff. We don't have excess capacity. We, we're over capacity as it is right now, so to do it, that, to me, is the number-one challenge, is the, is the administration of it, the position. Now, that could be within the county, it could be within the cities conceivably, it could be with a nonprofit, like Multnomah County has done. There's, there's different ways to do it, but I can tell you for the county, at least in my sphere, what I understand, there's, we don't have the capacity staff-wise to take it on.
Yeah, no, I'm definitely getting that message.
I mean, in fact, in our tax, in our tax office, because of the growth in property tax transactions and accounts and room tax accounts, we're probably an FTE down already, and we're going to come ask for that during budget.
Yeah, no, I'm tracking all of that. I guess, I'm still trying to understand what that, what that actual work is. Like, what is that, what is, what are those hours being put into?
I mean, another piece of it is, if you look at Clark County, they have great documents, they have a resource guide, so interested customers, they said, "Tell me about CPACE." There's a great resource guide, it walks through, there's an application process. So, that's all good existing materials that we can adapt to the county, but that's also work that, that's a piece of it. Is somebody, somebody calls up or walks into one of the departments and says, "Hey, I heard about CPACE, can you tell me about it?" Well, what, what do we give them? What do we give that person? How do we, you know, that's, that's part of the staff work.
Just give them Clark County's document.
They said they helped.
They said that we could use it, and it's, and it's very streamlined and very, it's very well put together. They had a significant demand, I think, I think October was when this...
They started in October.
Yeah, October.
Yes.
And I think they had ten applications immediately. Is that about right?
I think it was six or seven, is what I heard.
Okay. I think they had, when I talked to them, they had ten active applications. It's so new that they don't know if that's a surge, or if that's going to continue at that level, and I think that's part of the reason why they weren't moving forward with adding any staff, because they could handle it with the excess capacity they had, but they were accumulating those fees that were really intended to support the staff.
So, what about what Perry was saying, though, if we had a third party doing this? With so much remote work, maybe that company really does a good job, and we could find out who it was. I mean, just to talk to them and see, "Okay, so we set this up, we get it going, but we actually have a third party."
Yeah, and that's my understanding, that's a very good option.
To me, it seems like in today's world, it might really make a lot of financial sense, and there seems to be such demand for this. I would hate to, you know, think that it's going to take a year to get going on it, and, you know. Definitely, more clean energy would be good.
I did, and that was a good question, and a while ago, I did ask the Portland Development Commission, that's not what they're called now, Prosper Portland, I asked if they would have the capacity to take it on for us, and they said they didn't. But the idea there would be to consolidate expertise, so you're not duplicating that over and over again. And that's, and that's also one of the benefits of potentially going with a statewide solution, is you consolidate all of that together in one program. is you consolidate all of that together in one program that does the same thing for everybody.
And also just clarification on the statewide approach is there's a consortium of cities and counties that are talking. So it wouldn't necessarily be the state of Oregon running the program, but it would be more looking at a consortium of cities and counties on a statewide level.
Well, maybe we can be the model, like a lot of other things, like our ADU, you know, what we're trying to do with the ADU bill.
And all the work we're doing in community wildfire protection and many other, yeah, many other arenas, health services.
And then you just get more money funding for the county. That'd be great.
But, but Greg, this kind of, this question of, you know, how much you use, you know, a third-party administrator or, you know, how much we could, we could farm out to a contract. I mean, it really, I'm, I'm still trying to understand what the work is so that I get a better understanding of like what is, what is, what can be farmed out and what is, you know, kind of integrated, integral processes of finance that you can't ask somebody else to do?
So I'll try to give you the best answer I can. So the, what I understand, the process, the checklist, the forms, the entry and all of that is pretty streamlined. Somebody needs to own that. Somebody needs to be the administrator of that, whether that's us or whether it's a nonprofit or whether it's a city. Somebody needs to do that and own that process. There is time associated with that, even, even though it's as efficient as it possibly can be. In terms of, and, and I can't tell you really anymore what the workload is there other than what I've been told is it's a half an FTE. Multnomah County told me originally it was more, but after they, everything had settled down, they got it down to about a half an FTE. And they don't have a lot of activity right now either. In fact, last time I talked to them, they had no new activity. But what I also, I think part of your question was what's the impact on finance? So putting all of that aside, the impact on finance and tax is that we would, there's, there's a couple of things. One is largely, there is no impact. It would be something similar to what Assessor Langton mentioned in his. It's, it's attaching, we would effectively be using the property tax system to provide for the loans that everybody's been talking to that are longer than they would normally be and affordable. And it's, it's transferring the risk from those projects that didn't have a payback or return on investment that the bank is looking for, being attached to the property tax system. So that's not why the property tax system was created, but it can be used for that. So, and in terms of the logistics of that and the administrative, I don't think that's, that's not a challenge for us. It's just another entry in thousands that we do all the time.
So, so it really is?
In the event of a default, it's, it's, you know, one of 100 we deal with every year and we work those down and try to get them taken care of, but.
So the, the work we're talking about, it really is the application processing? Okay. And, and that does sound like something that can be farmed out?
Yeah. I think the other, the other piece of it is, is kind of who owns the program? So somebody comes up to the board and says, hey, I want to learn about CPACE. Where do we point them to? All right, if it's, if it's finance or CDD, if it's CDD and if you have a .5, that's the person that answers the questions. And if not, if they're on vacation, I mean, there has to be a broader involvement of, of other county staff. If we just hired-
If Assessor's not here, maybe we should make sure it's in his office, right? You said he wasn't available today?
Yeah.
He wasn't?
Your assessor's not here today, so it could-
I'm sure you wouldn't mind.
All volunteers, please take a step forward.
And that person is, is on vacation or out on leave, then who, who answers those questions about, tell me about CPACE? And that's the other, other piece of, of the work.
Paula, did you have a quick comment?
I just want to say, the work that you're talking about, Phil, I-
On the mic, just, I know Sharon's not going to be able to hear.
The workload, I would say, that you're talking about would entail probably putting up a nice website, like Eric mentioned, that people could go to. And that, that should not take a lot of work within your IT department. I would guess you have folks that work on that. And then as far as processing the application, that's not, you know, that's six to eight hours at the most for an application. But the other part, 350 to Schuetsch does have contract for the next two years to be able to continue advocating and promoting this program. We certainly could be that go-to person or that go-to entity as we have been. A lot of the work that's been referred to has been the work in getting stakeholders involved and bringing it forward. I also happen to know that we need to have a stakeholder committee, or at least to effectively do a program. We need to have a stakeholder committee to really make sure this gets implemented correctly by lenders, the real estate association and developers. We're happy to lead that process. We understand that Tyler Neese is very interested in that process as well. And we'd be happy to work hand in hand with Tyler to make this a successful program for the county and take the burden away. As far as who would handle the check the box, I mean, in my opinion, the county could always use additional revenue. And if you're putting forward a program that's going to generate far more revenue than it's going to utilize, it would be a great opportunity for the county to bring in additional funds. So when you are trying to create more affordable multifamily projects and things like that, here's a resource of funds that could be utilized for that and helping to improve other processes. So I just wanted to throw that in there. Does that help?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, I think what's helpful is if, if it's the board's direction that we create the program, of course, as staff, we, we implement your direction. We just want to create a realistic implementation timeline. That was my point. It wasn't to be short-sighted that we shouldn't pursue this program due to current staffing limitations. My point is we just need to be realistic with the resources that we have in terms of our implementation. So if the board provides the direction, we'll create that implementation plan and the estimated costs and what that might look like with various options, whether it's somebody within finance or we're contracting it out, whatever the case may be. There's still going to be a role for us to create the program, to participate on the stakeholder committee of some sort. Even if we're not staffing it, there's going to be a ton of questions for the county. We, we will have to play some sort of a role in that. We'll have to manage those contracts. And we can certainly do that. It's just, it's just going to take time for us to, to figure out what, what those resources look like. And is Greg seeking additional staffing in, in finance or Peter maybe in community development or in administration, whatever it looks like, we're there to, to implement the program. It's just, we just want to create a realistic implementation timeline. That's the key.
And we want to be very successful too. That's the other side of it. When you're in Deschutes County?
Yes.
You want to be successful and you want to do it right.
Yes.
Because, you know, when we did some of that research, we didn't get that positive feedback from some people that, and I truly want our program to work. So, thank you, Nick, for that. And really, yes, we realize we, you know, we're, we're short some employees at the moment.
A question.
Yes.
Interested cities, is there a decision space or a, a, a community meeting or a some, what does that mean?
Maybe a reach out to the cities. I mean, I know that the City of Ben has CPACE on their climate action plan. And I don't know the latest about their, their movement towards CPACE, but, you know, certainly we'd be happy to reach out to the four cities and ask about city interest.
Redmond had already sent a letter in.
But that was, you guys, was that, we support the county doing it versus?
Well, maybe so, but they can-
Would there be any action for a city? Or is it just a jurisdiction that's in or out, which, you know, there's no overhead possibly at the city administration level? Is what I'm trying to think through a little bit.
Or, yeah, or, I mean, if there's, if there's enough city interest to seed, you know, I'm, I'm still just kind of trying to get, get over, get, get through the like upfront costs, seed funding to, you know, initially staff this before application fees start to kind of, you know, make it run. But if there was, you know, if there was adequate interest from the cities, we could maybe work a deal where, you know, they set this up at COIC and they collect, you know, five, 10,000 bucks from, you know, a handful of jurisdictions and, and they can, they can get this running.
Well, and I was thinking that, you know, it doesn't matter if you're in or outside of a city. If Deschutes County allows it on the tax bill in Deschutes County, it's inclusive of everybody. So I, that's what's my, more of my thought.
Yeah, I mean, there's two main ways of structuring it. One is, is you just make it countywide and then the cities can participate, maybe like Commissioner Chang mentioned, financially or, or seed money. The other approach is you set up the, the lien structure, but you would have the cities do the application and the, the processing of applications within their cities. Although that's, you lose some efficiencies because-
Well, but let's step back. So you said the seed money for a city to be participating. I mean, I, I'm just thinking, is there any difference if you're in or outside of a city, if you're in one city or the other? Either the county does the program or we don't. And if you're in a city, I don't see that there's, I mean, I don't understand why there's a difference of either overhead or decision space about why you'd participate or not, unless you don't want to participate.
I guess if, if a city said, I can't imagine a city saying, we don't want to participate. I mean, you could run the applications through the cities if, if, if it's within their jurisdiction. But then you-
But they'd still come right to the treasurer and the assessor's office and say, here's the plan. And we probably wouldn't really make any efficiencies. So I don't know that-
I think it'd be an inefficient method, because if, if you talk about a .5 at the county, well, if you start doing it at the cities, then it might be a .3 and a .2 and a .1.
Yeah. Well, and I'm just, for a city to participate is really to say, you know, put the little sticker on the window that says, we participate in Deschutes County CPACE. If you want to know more, call Deschutes County. You know, so I'm thinking maybe that's all they would do.
Might be more on the marketing side.
Yep.
Well, I know we're talking about clean energy, but next year, the Pacific Power's actually asking for 12.2% of a rate increase. So the sooner people can get their solar panels funded through this program, I would think the better. Even though, energy in Oregon is fairly reasonable at moments. So Eric, do you need any more direction?
Yeah, I mean, the direction we're seeking is whether or not the board wants to, to direct staff to come back with a draft ordinance. And then if that's the direction, we can come back with some options in terms of program implementation and try to work out some of these details.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, motion, please.
So I, I think what we're talking about is, is option, oh, well, what I'd be interested among these four options that, that Eric has listed for us is, is option three, to establish a CPACE program for the unincorporated county and interested cities in which the county would, would pass the ordinance and then provide for administration of the program. You know, through one of the, you know, through one of the scenarios that we've, we've discussed today, we've discussed a lot of them. And, but, you know, just indicating that that's where my leaning is and we can discuss that before I make an option, if, I might make a motion if, if people would like.
That's the obvious choice from my point of view.
Exactly. I think that's the, I think that's the most positive choice we can do at this moment in time. An emergency clause, that would mean that all three of us had to vote for it. Are we talking about that? Or are we just going to turn this into an emergency?
Or would we do that when the ordinance came to us?
What?
If it's not an emergency clause, the board would adopt the ordinance. There would be two weeks for second reading. And then the implementation, or the ordinance would be effective three months later. If the board passed by emergency clause, it would need to be, if there are two commissioners here, it'd have to be both commissioners. And if it was three, all three. But, but really, passing it with the emergency clause and having it sooner, we're not going to be able to get the program started. I mean, if the board approved the ordinance and said, okay, we want it effective in a month, we're not going to be able to, we won't have a program ready anyway. So, so I would, it's an option, but-
People could start dreaming too, though.
Yeah.
We could get more calls. Paula could call us and say, have you guys gotten that done? So, yes.
And, and lending institutions could start to gear up and all sorts of things could happen.
Well, yeah, more of the community, if we could get it more press, what we are making available. So do you want to make that a motion then? Commissioner Chang, please?
So, so would I, would, at this point, would we just be directing county staff to prepare an ordinance?
To bring back to the board. And, and options for implementation, I guess, is how I would characterize it.
So this is a countywide program. You want a draft ordinance along the lines of the model ordinance that we've been provided. You don't want it set for a public hearing at this point? This is to just bring a document back to the board? Or do you want us to get it scheduled for a public hearing as well?
We could schedule it for a public hearing and then have a work session preview, prior to it, just to make sure the board's prepared.
Sure.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move that we direct, I move that we direct staff to prepare a draft ordinance and initiate a public hearing process with, with a work session in advance. And along with the ordinance, prepare for us options for implementation.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Thank you. And a quick-
So now, I was just going to say, so now, I mean, yeah, this is the time to, you know, to have people really digest if it's coming, what does it really mean? You know, as I say, the bankers and the rest of the community. And if we're going to have a public hearing on the matter, so it'll be a great opportunity for people to know it's, it's really coming.
Eric, do you know how long it would be before we could possibly have a public hearing? Would that be like three weeks or something?
You know, my guess, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, that would be the earliest.
Three weeks would be the earliest. I just wanted to let Paula know.
We have to provide notice. So my hunch is it's going to be tail end of April.
Okay, end of April.
End of April?
Middle to, end of April, I'd say tail end at this. I opt to work with Sharon too on dates that are available based on the board's calendar and whatnot. So, and we have to provide notice. So, yeah, I, I think, yeah, certainly we can get it done before the end of April, maybe as early as mid-April, depending on availability.
Okay.
And also just for the audience members, the work session will be very similar where it's more of a staff discussion. Here's the draft ordinance. And then the public hearing is, is the more, more formal process for the public input.
Okay. All right. So we voted. We're good. We've given the audience, hopefully by the end of April, we will have our public hearing then. And maybe we'll have a few more employees by then. Great.
Get on that marketing.
It's a recruiting tool.
Yes, truly.
This would be a fun job duty for somebody.
Where are you going? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who's worked on this for the past year.
Good team effort.
Yes, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you for your testimony today. Okay, so we now have other items?
I think it was some interesting meeting I wanted to remind everybody it was at or something. But let me check what it was. Doesn't even come to mind.
I can jump in.
Yes, please.
With one. My fellow Commissioners have heard me talk about congressionally designated spending requests. The, our two senators are, have opened the, the solicitation or the, you know, they, they've opened up an online submission portal for congressionally directed spending requests. And there have been, there's quite a number of projects out in the community that people are working on. There's, there's three in particular that I am tracking very closely. And one of those, I actually think the county would be the most appropriate requestor for. Doesn't mean that the county is the only option, but it is, you know, and in my opinion, the county would be the most, most appropriate requestor for. So I wanted to put that forward to the other two Commissioners to, for consideration. And the other one that, that I, I think will be of interest to, to the full Board of Commissioners is a request from the Pine Community Health Clinic for the, what, what they could seek in a congressionally directed spending request through, I can't remember what HERSA's stands for, but it's a federal program, a federal agency called HERSA. What they could, they could seek funding for would be not necessarily, not necessarily the new construction of their, of the new building in their expansion project, but for major renovations in the old building that would happen because you could move certain things over the new building. And also for a whole bunch of equipment. And when I was in DC and I spoke to Senator Merkley's appropriations staffer, he, he thought conceivably they, if they could put together a list of, of items up to one and a half million dollars, that might be, that might be a doable, a congressionally directed spending request. So they, in that case, I think- So they, in that case, I think we would be, what we could consider is submitting a letter from the full Board of Commissioners in support of that earmark request, or I can just write a letter individually. But the other piece I wanted to-
So that's for a half a million?
Up to, up to, they, if they can put together the list of eligible expenses, they could request up to like one and a half million.
One and a half or a half?
One and a half.
1.5?
Did you mention another project before that? You said something about the county could apply for something?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, yeah. So the one that I would, I would like to-
So you said there's something we could-
I'm getting, yeah.
I didn't follow the logic.
I felt like I had to, I was gonna go to the one that we would request, but then I felt like it was important to mention the other one first, just because the Pine Community Health Clinic project basically raised the question of like, do we engage as a Board of Commissioners in these congressionally-designated spending requests or not? The city of Redmond has also, you know, they also reached out to us and said, "Would you support some of our congressionally-directed spending requests?" And I, you know, when I, when I heard about that, I said, "I'm not sure whether we, as a board, are doing that or not." But, so that, you know, add that one to the mix as well. But this, I printed out these maps. Unfortunately, it's a bigger piece of paper than it printed on, so you can't see the whole thing. But you may recall that last year, in the spring into the summer, there were a number of constituents who contacted us with concerns about the 4606 road.
Yes, and the gate that went across-
And the gates and the access into the Deschutes National Forest and Bull Springs Tree Farm, also known as Skyline Forest. At this point, it seems, you know, pretty clear that the, those gates are there and they're not going to be opened. So there's been exploration of an alternate route into the 4606 road and the Deschutes National Forest. And it would go, you can see, sorry, the map is not, it got cut off on the edges, but instead of, instead of turning off of Johnson Road immediately after you come from Cheveland Park, you know, just north of Cheveland Park, you would continue up Johnson Road and do a wraparound on a couple of different county roads, the last one being Sizemore.
We know Sizemore very well, don't we?
So you would, you would, you would come out Sizemore, and then you would turn south, and you can see that little green dotted line that, that's the proposed alternate, you know, the proposed alternate route to get to the 4606 road past the gates. So that green dotted line is currently a, it is a Forest Service system road, but it's probably like a Class 1 road, you know, not much more than a two-track. But, you know, level, level grounds, you know, pretty environmentally simple area. So what the Forest Service would do is do engineering and, you know, a streamlined NEPA process to upgrade the classification of that road. And then, and then after that process, that design engineering, planning process was done, then they could proceed to construction. So we would, the congressionally-directed spending request would be to get some funds to cover those design, engineering, planning costs, and construction costs for this alternative. I'm still working on, actually, I have, I do not know yet how much this will cost, or how much we would need to request. But I'm working, I'm working on with the Forest Service to get those numbers right now. And I may or may not have said this at the beginning, I should have, but the congressionally-directed spending requests are due at the beginning of April. So we have a pretty short time window at this point to kind of put together what these requests look like. And again, I would like to get a sense right now, or, you know, get a sense soon, whether the Board of Commissioners is open to the idea of the county being the requestor for this project, or whether we should go and look for someone else to play point.
So who's gonna, how soon will the cost be determined for this road?
Forest Service is putting the numbers together as we speak.
So does that mean next week?
I could have numbers by next week.
Okay.
But if there's, I, you know, if there's no openness to the county playing point on this, I can go, you know, it would be helpful to know that so I can go and work on, you know, someone else to play the request role.
Right. No, no, I actually talked to the Forest Service yesterday about China Hat and the number of residents out there, and the number of calls that have gone to 911. So from a different point, relationship with the Forest Service. So, no, I know that road. I know we must have gotten at least a hundred and some letters from different residents that were so concerned, well, so impacted by the road being locked. So, yes. Please, can you share with us the number then when you get it? I think that's great.
So I might be hesitant to support as a county-led effort because it's a road all on the national forest. That's my only thought process. You know, we do roads, we have a county road system, we maintain roads. But this is a federal road on federal land. So, I mean, that, just the disconnect there is all I'm kind of acknowledging. But what's a county advocacy at that point?
The way that congressionally-directed spending requests work, the federal agency can't make the request. So, I think that-
So they do the work?
Oh, yeah.
They would do the work. We would just ask-
They can't, they can't ask for themselves for money. They're not supposed-
Well, there's a little bit larger picture.
And this, I mean, and, you know, I initiated the, this concept of an alternative access point because of, you know, the tremendous amount of community input that we got asking for restoration of access. And having to, you know, after we dug through all the information, having to go back to people and say, "This chunk is not a county road." You know, it's a very starting, you know, when you turn off a Johnson Road, it's a county road for about a quarter mile. After that, it's a local access road, and we do not have the authority to order those gates opened or restore access through here. So it was a, it was an issue that constituents brought to us and asked the county to help solve. And this alternative access route, it depends, it depends on three different county roads to get into the little, it's basically a mile stretch of Forest Service road that would be upgraded. Because our road, I mean, if, if, if we needed to upgrade Sizemore to, you know, to make this a viable access road, we could, we could ask for that part of it, too, probably.
But we just got, we just fixed the bridge, though, so we should be in good shape there.
Right. But because the weak link in this alternative access route is that, that chunk of Forest Service road, that the request would be for funds to do the work on Forest Service property.
So you're saying this would be an alternate route from Bull Springs Road, or, you know, over there, all the way around Johnson Road, Tyler Road, Tumalo Reservoir Road, to Sizemore Road, that alternate, instead of going down that red hatched route? Is that a good bicycle path? Because I think that, you know, some people, that's their goal, is to get out into the open lands on a bicycle.
And if you, I mean, if you're a gravel cyclist, or, you know, a person who's, who's out there to get a bike ride in, I don't think a couple miles is gonna make a difference. I mean, you know, it might, can possibly be welcome. You know, "Oh, you added three miles to my route. Great." But speaking to a few cyclists, the idea of this specific alternate route to get to the places where they like to ride their bikes, they were pretty enthusiastic about it.
So we had some pretty engaged, pretty engaged residents, our Chair of our Planning Commission, got real engaged during the bridge redevelopment. We've heard many times over the years about the Tumalo Winter Deer Range in this area also. So, I mean, we might want to think about what we're doing here, as in, if there's gonna be pushback, we should acknowledge the community that might be affected by this and have, instead of us saying, "Oh, yeah, let's go, you know, ask for money."
The winter, the winter range closure would still be in place. This is for, you know, this is for spring, summer, fall usage, not, you know, that, that whole area. The 4606 road on the very south end off of, you know, off of Skyliners, they, they shut that, they shut that whatever point, you know, I forget the exact date in the fall when they shut that. But, you know, the winter range closure is a winter range closure, and we're not, this would not be, in any way be intended to try to go around or undermine.
Would there be a gate associated with that somewhere?
There probably would be. That would be part of the budget.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, that's the rest of the picture. You know, instead of just saying, "Here, we want some money," maybe there's a bigger picture for us as commissioners to let the community understand. You know, as I say, you're sharing this map with us now. I don't know if other people have seen this map, so.
And that's, and that is why the Forest Service does NEPA processes, you know, A, address all the values at stake, and B, to provide a degree of public engagement and public, public participation before they move forward with, you know, any moving, you know, an ounce of dirt.
Great. So, I mean, I don't know that I'd be supportive, but I'm not against it. So, I mean, I'm just kind of neutral right now, so we'll see.
Okay.
Thanks for your efforts. I mean, that's a big hot topic.
I, yeah, I've heard from a lot of people who are, who would really like to be able to use that, that piece of their public lands again.
Definitely.
And so Commissioners, would you like for us to bring back draft letters for your consideration, which I've heard one yes, one neutral, and I'm not sure where Commissioner Dyer, you're at at this point, but we could bring back draft letters of support at the March 28 meeting, which would still give us a few days to submit those prior to the April 1 deadline, just so we can provide support as you wish?
That's right. We, because we don't have a meeting next week, do we?
Right.
Okay. Sounds like appropriate course of action next.
So there's two different things. There's Pine Community Health Clinic project. They will, they will submit their, they will be the ones submitting their project. But we could provide a letter of support if we-
Oh, I think we should definitely provide a letter of support for them.
We could bring two separate letters for your, for your consideration. Is that-
Yeah. I mean, this other, this other one, if the county was going to be the requestor, then we would need to make a submission, an online submission-
Okay.
-for that project. And so, I mean, we could bring a write-up for, you know, basically what, the information that was going to be submitted for, for consideration.
Well, I still feel really frustrated that I wanted to ask for 4 million for that new project, and I was told that I, we couldn't ask for 4 million. And, you know, after seeing, what, 5.8 billion that was sent out, we truly could have gotten an extra million for the, their new building. So-
Well, now we can get a bite of another apple.
But this is, this is renovations, and that new building's gonna, what, need 12 million total? So-
Well, part of their, I mean, part of their budget was for the work they were gonna do in the old building, because they were moving certain things to the new buildings. So it's, it's what's eligible. And the equipment, you know, the, you know, x-ray machines and all sorts of stuff like that are, are not cheap. So I'm hopeful that they can get 1 and 1/2 million.
I would, I would think it wouldn't take much. Okay. Commissioner DeBonne, did you have anything?
I attended Justice for Veterans, justiceforvets.org, I think. Judge Miller and myself were there. Mr. Bill Minix from Southern Deschutes County, advocate for the Justice for Vets program. So it was kind of an all-day online seminar, a bunch of different topics. I was able to dial in and step away a couple times yesterday, but it's really a great program that is being proposed. So it's, it's a choice of the court system if they want to have a veterans' court, so it's not our domain there specifically. But it was just a wonderful experience, kind of hearing from some of the veterans and what they've been through, the mentor programs, really trying to help folks that are in the justice system. So it was a real good, good opportunity to hear about that. Also attended the 911 user board meeting yesterday as a Commissioner. And, yeah, I guess Sarah, oh, I get to see Sarah in person. She was online yesterday. And things seem to be rolling along pretty well at 911, except for the recruitment.
So I had a 7:00 AM executive meeting for Central Oregon Health Council, which I realized that, oh, my gosh, Zoom at 7:00 AM.
Oh, they didn't have breakfast, then?
Yeah. So I'm going like, okay, let's-
Look sharp.
No, let's feed our horses really fast and be a, yes. So that was, that was really good. That board pulled together at 7:00 AM. I knew that was the only time they, because a lot of those people are working people. And then at 10:00 AM, I actually got on a population Zoom call from Portland State that Judge Crawford had asked me to kind of represent what is happening, and their numbers really didn't quite seem right. And of anyone that has left Deschutes County, they have moved to Creek County, is the number one county accepting our residents. And if you looked at their numbers, it didn't look like they were giving, you know, just such as the man from our budget committee that's moving to Palbute. I said, "It really doesn't look like they're acknowledging the number of people that have actually permanently moved into Brusada and Palbute." So we had, I thought we had a really good conversation over that. So that was like a kind of an interesting. And then Monday night was the Fair Association meeting. And it seems that the fair is really, the team has picked it up, and I suspect that our fair, again this year, will be outstanding. So I can't wait to see what the kids are doing with their animals. But I'm sure they are all finding their animals and feeding them at this moment in time. So, anyway, that was, that was good Monday night.
One more note. So I was not able to attend the Association of Oregon County meetings. I just had other things take priority, so I didn't enjoy any of those meetings this time. But there's a new proposal for the budget to go up, so we gotta keep track of that. You know, so as members, AOC budget to fully fund the organization is gonna be another, you know, X amount of thousands of dollars this next year. So, and it's being discussed, so it isn't, it isn't passed yet, but I just saw that kind of paperwork go through. And then also yesterday, there is a retreat day, in-person only, kind of the re-envisioning AOC, kind of a, must be a, kind of a visioning process. And I was selected to be on either that committee or something like that. So I was not able to attend, but I will definitely fit it in as it comes around again. So I think yesterday was the first meeting of that.
Right. And they have set up the September meeting at the Pendleton Roundup, and, which is amazing. And then they also-
That's a Umatilla County meeting.
Right, Umatilla County. And then there is a meeting June 15, I believe it is, on a Wednesday for Legislative in Hermiston with AOC Legislative. So, and the good news is, that's a couple months away.
I'll also just mention that the Environmental Center's effort with the RARE program and Sustainable Northwest to do an energy planning, or an energy plan for, that covers the area of Deschutes County, is underway. I attended their workshop on, yesterday, in the morning. And one of the really hot topics was, was water and energy, you know, essentially how, how, the irrigation system that we have and the farms that we have, you know, require water, water delivery, and how we could find both, you know, conservation opportunities, you know, save water, save energy, and also how we could do in conduit hydro out of the , the, the canal-to-pipe projects that are, that are being implemented around the county. So that was, there's that. And I'd also mentioned that on Monday, both Commissioner and Dyer and I attended the, a celebration event at Pacific Crest Affordable Housing's Canal Commons Project.
That's right. I knew I'd done something else.
I know, you do a lot of the-
My life-
I know, you do a lot in a few days.
Okay, you're right, we were there with the governor.
The governor visited and it was, it's a really exciting project to, to check out. There's the, I want to say 96 or 98 apartments, you know, multi-family, you know, beautiful multifamily housing, affordable housing project built by a, a private developer, still using the whole capital structure of an affordable housing project, which all, as we know, all know is extremely complicated. But I'm right there next to the Pine Nursery Park in a really beautiful setting. And, you know, I, I got to, well, I think both of us witnessed, there is a tenant, you know, there are a few tenants from the, you know, from Canal Commons who attended this, this small tour celebration event. And one of them, you know, welcomed the whole group, the governor and everyone, to go into her apartment to, to look around. And that the state had provided through OHCS, $3 million or something in that range for this project. And as, as everyone was exiting, she, she tapped the governor on the shoulder and said, can I just give you a hug for, for the state's role in making this project happen so that I can have a home? And, you know, they hugged and then after, at the end of that, they were both tearing, tearing up and it was really, you know, quite a powerful moment. So that, that was a, a neat event for me to attend.
Well, it was for me too, but the interesting thing was, the one building that was, the bigger building did have elevators, but the building that we went into that was under construction, three stories I believe, does not have an elevator in that building. So it was fairly small, I mean, I'm sure maybe it was under whatever, 30 units and so you're not required to have an elevator. But then again, that means that people that have ADA issues cannot go up to, they can only live on the first floor. So I, I just randomly asked, oh, is there an elevator? And there wasn't one in that smaller building. And I kind of, I found that, you know, the people that built the project, truly, they are committed to what they're doing and I so appreciate it. I actually handed the letter, two letters to the governor, thank you, for the team here helping me put those together. One of the letters was about foster care and what I'm hearing from the community after visiting the brand-new memory care on Burgess Road next to Commissioner DeBonne's Catholic Church, I went to that last Thursday. And a year ago, it had been a building that wasn't getting its property taxes paid. I was hoping someone would step up and buy the building, the owners were in Texas, they weren't paying their taxes, and it had amazing bones, 30 apartments in it. Anyway, a year ago, women from Portland who came to America from Romania bought that building. And they do care like that in Portland and they, they took a gamble on La Pine and they've bought this building and they just had the opening, grand opening Thursday. It is an amazing, amazing facility, great bones, you know, the outside comes in, the light comes in, two-story and a lot of the common areas. I mean, it's really, really lovely. And in fact, Karina and Anna, who was a rose princess, she's really, and she is gonna be there running it to make sure that it gets going on the right hand. But I met someone who works in senior placement and senior placement in our county is so impacted, that was what my other letter to the governor was about. And on addition to Deer Ridge and getting a psychiatric hospital open, you cannot find a place to put your, your parents if they need help. And then facilities that are running, you know, like the home facilities, they are being pounded by more and more rules. You have to have a fire drill every 90 days. Well, can you imagine if you've got people in your residence, like maybe let's say like six people and they're, they're really difficult and yet every 90 days you have to take them out the door because of, you know, the rules are just becoming over and overly burdensome. They've got to have sprinkler systems in the entire facility, which is probably another 10,000. So just talking to Anna, this is a different Anna that works in that industry and she's worked there for a long time, she's like, oh my gosh, Patty, there aren't enough workers, truly not enough workers. Facilities that have room for maybe 60 people can only have 40 at this time because they're short-staffed. So it's not just the county that's dealing with short staffing, but it's in our entire community. Memory Care down there, they want to take care of veterans. It is, it's a lovely facility and the more people that can support it, I think it'll be great. They would love to have licensing for more than 30, they have some really rather generous-sized apartments in the building. So, but it was so nice to welcome them to the community and know that they are truly making a difference. And it's so close, like to Sun River, it's like 10 minutes away. So actually met someone from First Interstate and they were going to bring their father up from San Diego. So that was all a really positive experience and hopefully we can do something for foster care. Sometimes when you put, government keeps putting more and more rules on things, I, I know people who've actually left that industry and they just said, you know, can't deal with it anymore. So we, we've got to really look at our numbers and thank the, because Deschutes County has a lot of seniors here. And, you know, where can they go for help? So, any other wonderful things? No, Nick, anything else?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, so do we need to go on?